So we're in, yes, we're in opening session.
I know you're there.
Okay, so thank you very much for your patience while we were in executive session. At this time, I'd like to start the regular business of the meeting and we will start that with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, and the next item on the agenda is invitation to speak. Does anyone have any comments?
No.
No? Okay. And we have quite a few sets of minutes to be approved and I have, I'm entertaining a motion to move that to a different part of the meeting since we have visitors here this evening to do some presentations for us.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes to the end of the superintendent's report or the finance report.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Mrs. Gattuso.
Okay. So first, welcome back to the room. It's nice to be here.
It's lovely.
Yeah, I promised the air won't be cold, but in recognition, we gave you a few sweets and some bowers from our opening meeting, which we'll explain later to the audience, but first on our list is Ron Ford, who has come back for the committee to vote on the second reading of the concussion policy.
Thank you. I actually have a couple of revisions to the policy. There's some typos and grammatical errors that we need to clean up a little bit.
The content stays the same?
Yes, the content stays the same. You see, I highlighted them in bold, just item number 12, number 14, number 18, just some grammatical errors, but the content of the policy is the same. I'm sorry. So based on our discussions last time, there were some changes, which I highlighted in italics, which further put us some of the comments that you made, help me further align us with all the regulations in Massachusetts law. So I think this is very good policy at this point. If there's any questions you guys have, me in regards to this, but I think this is ready to be submitted to the state if you guys approve it.
Does anyone have comments?
Just a quick thing on number five. Right now, we, coaches are, will be responsible?
Yeah, oh, coaches are responsible, I'm sorry.
And I'd like that you combined two of them. I think you combined nine and 10, that was nice.
Yeah, and that suggested, Jim, it made sense. It's really, I met also with our trainer and our nurse in detailing all the things that they are responsible for and now actually putting that in the policy. And they're in agreement with it. They thought, you know, this is great to have it in writing, you know, the responsibilities, particularly if they ever did leave the position too. You know, we have it all laid out, what the responsibilities are, so if it brings any new into the position, they will know right up front.
I just have one question.
And this doesn't relate to the policy at all so much, but when eighth graders play up in diversity sports or in the JV team, are they impact tested?
Yes. Oh, absolutely. Any eighth grader before they, as soon as they sign up to play, when we send the letter out, if we entertain, we're not doing that this fall, we're full teams this fall, but if we ever do open that up, then the first thing that we do is we give the list to Ms. Collins, she brings them down to the impact.
Okay. So I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor of approval and adoption of the Cohasset Middle High School Head Injury Concussion Management Procedures and Protocols for 2015-16?
Do we need a roll call?
Yeah, I think we should do a roll call.
Aye, Barbara, second. Aye, can you do that?
Aye, Mary Goldberg.
Aye, Ellen Mark.
Aye, Gina Stino.
So the last step is that the superintendent will go in a letter to the state to determine if this has been approved and will be on file for the next four years.
Great. So can I just check, are you going to upload that to the new website tomorrow?
Yes.
Okay, we will upload it ourselves and on the second app, so it's all set in the format it's in, and if you could send us a doc?
Yeah.
So Jennifer can take care of that, that'd be great.
And we had talked about at the last time putting it multiple places on the website, maybe the student handbook as well as on the athletic page.
Yes, it, it's, the state says it should be adopted, it's a student handbook, so if this is, if it's something that we can electronically do now, I think it makes sense to do it.
It could probably merge it because everything's electronic now.
Yeah, so, yeah, this should, this should be in the student handbook.
Okay. Any more comments? No? I have to say that your sports meeting the other night, oh man, it was standing room only.
It was the biggest crowd we've ever had.
There were no seats. It was amazing.
It was great. I just appreciate the turnout from the community. There's very little chasing everybody around. We had three students that had to chase down for registrations.
That's great.
So to go from last year where we launched it and we were, you know, begging people to go online and people still handing papers.
Well, they were still nervous.
Yeah.
Last year, they were still a little bit nervous.
But it was great, you know, it was just, it was tremendous turnout and I think we, you know, we got the message across and they met the coaches and everyone was home by 8:30, so.
Yep, it was all good.
Now, thank you for coming.
Okay, you're welcome. Yes?
I'd like to make a motion to move the athletic financial presentation to announce since Ron's here, from the financial section of the agenda.
That's fine with me, is everybody else okay? Okay, so do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. So I just passed out a revised report on athletics. We were able to find a couple of errors from the previous report and now we actually reconcile against our accounting system and our budgets and so forth. So I think we graphed all the expenses and all the revenues and so forth. So as you see, the first page is all fall sports and then it goes into winter sports, spring sports, and then on the last page, it's all a summary brought all together. So we've had a total of revenues last year between paid receipts, use of fees, and booster donations of $210,000,946.25, and then our expenses totaled $485,846.44. So if you just look at those two numbers, you can see that athletics is not a standalone. We do need help from our appropriated budget. So out of our appropriated budget, we expended $273,063.19, and then we had to use a small balance from FY14 involving of $1,00837 to make up the difference. So you can just see that the balance is now equal to where it should. The balance of all our expenses are balanced out by the revenues and the budget itself, the town appropriated budget. And, yeah, I saw yours, Katie, your spreadsheet too was...
I guess the question I have, and maybe I'm looking at it wrong, but when I see in the FY16 athletics detail what was appropriated for FY15, it's $264,544?
Yes, yeah.
And I guess I'm just trying to understand the difference between the $273,063 and what was in the budget book for appropriated of $264,544?
I mean, we overspent by about $10,000 from what we budgeted to the appropriated budget. So we budgeted the $264 in the actual budget, but we actually spent out of the budget was $274, $273.
So when I see appropriated budget, I, personally, I'd like to see it tie back to the appropriated number, and then if we have an actual budget that runs over, that's, especially when it's $10,000 and it's a growing program, there's teams that are expanding, I'm totally fine with that, but if you don't mind just having that tie to the appropriated number?
Sure, yeah, we can set it up a little differently, yeah.
Yeah, just have the appropriated budget tied in the budget book and then have, if the revised budget, I mean, or revised forecast, whatever you want to call it, is something different for the year, that's totally fine, but it's...
I mean, that was the, you know, I call it appropriated budget, just so people understand that it's from the budget itself, that is the actual expenditure. So you can make the, you can, you can look at the budget of $264, but the actual expenditure was $273.
So you have your plan, you have your plan and you have your actual.
Right, yes, yes.
Right, and then your actual becomes like your history from the next year.
Appropriated is what was budgeted, actual is what you spent, and they can't be different, but I'd like to, I'd like to keep with the word appropriated being what ties back to the original budget figure, and then actuals are what they are. In this case, it was a very modest amount over, so.
Yeah, yeah, so we can change that.
And moving forward too, the, Donna and Dave worked with the reconciliation piece, this, we talked about what happens. What we're going to do is now monthly go through that, so it's not like an end of the year reconciliation, so we're going to be able to, you know...
As we go along, so it's better to try and reconcile everything at the end of the year, which is a little more monumental, we're going to try it on a monthly basis.
I have a question. So Ronford, fall 14, you had, based on the user fees of $57,225, is about 229 kids based on the average user fee. Is your expectation this fall, do we have as many kids signed up?
Yeah, I think we're actually going to have, have more, you know, and those are the actual paid user fees or waivers and stuff like that, but I think that we're projecting more right now, the numbers that showed up in the, and I projected more, I took more of a, a, we projected like more numbers in the user fee, so we're taking more of, we projected more money to come out of the budget, you know what I'm saying? So we knew, we, we were looking for more user fees coming in this year when we projected our budget, and I think we're going to hit that number.
We've added a couple of freshman sports that we didn't have before.
We added those last year, so, and so they're coming, but they're growing.
But that'll be reflected in the doing factor. Particularly field hockey, field hockey is growing exponentially.
Boys soccer is too. I mean, our numbers are growing, which is great. I mean, we knew that, we put those freshman teams in because we saw that bubble coming, and the bubble's here, you know, that the eighth, this year's ninth grade, I've been here 25 years, this is the first time we've ever gone over 400, I believe, in our enrollments, because I've always been tied so much to enrollments as a coach and as an athletic director, and we're 420, right? I mean, that's a huge jump over. So, you know, the extra kids are, now, you know, we're going to pick that up in our programs and having freshman teams, we need them. I mean, we would be cutting right now 30, 40, 50 kids if we have freshman teams. So it's great that, you know, we're supporting this, and I appreciate it. Makes my job a lot more pleasant.
Okay. Any more questions for us?
One question, I don't know that it would necessarily go in here, and it's sort of a more general question, but do you have, or is there anywhere what the participant numbers are? I was just kind of curious, like, based on what the total balance is for sport, how many kids you have?
Yeah, we have, we give them the participation numbers, well, we do that every season with the MIA and everything else, so, yeah, we can put that, we can build that right into the budget piece too.
Interesting, I just thought it'd be kind of interesting to know, and I know this is the first time you've broken it down like this so officially with this.
Yeah, that's something we can usually add right into it, and we have to do that, we report that to the MIA every year, and that's an important part of our every season reporting.
Very good.
Thank you for listening. I appreciate it.
You can stay and listen to the minutes later.
Thank you for a little bit.
Thank you.
All right, the next thing on your list, let me see if I can find it here, is the introduction of our school resource officer this year, Sergeant Michael Loebz, who has come to be a part of our district. He's already, he might want to come up, he'll, why don't you bring him to the second chair, along with Chief William Quigley. No acting. And so they're here tonight in terms of, Michael Loebz interviewed for the position, it was obviously awkward, and he's already been here. He'll tell a little bit about how his summer was, he had the summer he didn't expect, I think, but he's in great tip-top shape physically, I believe, and he's here this fall, and it's been a, it's been a quick introduction, but I think it's been, it's great having him on board, having worked with him a little bit, I've done so far. We meet fairly regularly, if not in the hallway down in my office for meetings, and I have to say, I can see nothing but positive opportunity coming out of having him here at the school. So let me welcome him.
Good evening.
Welcome.
Thank you, appreciate it.
I think you saw in your packet the summary, the general duties and responsibilities, that was part of the packet, and the hours that he would be working, as well as his vacation schedule, would run independent of others in his department. So I don't know if you have any specific questions you want to ask, he can probably give you a little bit about his summer and what he plans to do this fall. He certainly introduced himself at the meeting on the 31st, some of you heard it, the community didn't get to hear that, but maybe you can reiterate some of what you spoke about on the 31st.
Without going too in depth, because there's, there's a lot of things that are involved in the school resource officer program, but basically what we're going to try to do is forge some relationships and some friendships with the younger kids and institute some law enforcement, safety type presentations with them. And then with the older kids, basically what we're doing is the same thing, as well as dealing with different issues and problems that may came up, might come up on a, on a weekly, daily basis, and basically mentor, educate, protect those kids. That's basically the mantra of being a school resource officer in a nutshell. But being there all the time, having them comfortable being around a police officer, going, coming to a police officer, talking to a police officer if they have, have an issue or a problem, maybe, maybe being a different outlet to help them out that they haven't had in the past.
And also, it's going to provide a single source contact from the department, you know, as it was, you know, in the past, if the school called the police, then you could get, then you'd get a, you'd get one of 25 people. Now, everything will go through. Sergeant Loebz, and Sergeant Loebz reports through his chain of command in the police department, Lieutenant Leonard in the detective division, and it should make for a more seamless operation.
I think that it's great that you were so intrinsically involved in the recreation program this summer, because most of the counselors there are students at the middle high school, and they got to know you, you know, up close and personal. I think it's, I think it was a wonderful opportunity for you and for them to get to know you, you know, know your face and, you know, who you are and how you deal with students. I think it was a great thing.
And definitely unofficial.
Yep.
I know when we met, you talked a little bit about mentoring and training, because this is the first time that we've had a SRO officer in our district, so maybe you could talk a little bit about who you're utilizing and who you're benchmarking our district off of in terms of, you know, as we kind of think through how we best utilize you based on what is best practice out there, but also what works in our community.
With, with, I've attended some of the juvenile police officer conferences over the last year, and I've given one of the school resource officers, that's actually the president of that association, is Chip Eaton in Canton, and he is a great resource now, and Mike is going to be in close contact with him. Again, it's very difficult, we haven't had a lot of time this year, Mike jumped right into it with recreation, so we're sort of, you know, crawling before we can walk, and, you know, we want to make sure he's in the district, you know, for the first couple of weeks of school, and he's here all the time before he actually ventures out, but we're going to take it real slow and, you know, work with the superintendent, the principals.
Do you have any, I'm sorry, I didn't realize your hand was up. Do you have specific plans for presentations for the students, or how are you going to handle that? And do you have an idea what the percentage of time will be between the three slash four buildings? I mean, obviously, it will be on a case-by-case basis if there are issues, but I'm just wondering at the beginning, what, what you kind of think might work?
Well, I've reached, I've reached out briefly, I spoke briefly with the principals of the Osgood and the DHL, and what I'm going to try to do right now in the beginning in these first few weeks is make sure I'm there on Tuesdays and Thursdays between 11 and 1 o'clock, and just get used, have the kids get used to me being there and, you know, talking to the kids and get a familiar area between, between them and myself.
That's the Osgood.
That's at the DHL, and the Osgood.
Resuss and watch out.
Exactly, exactly.
You're going to be on the playground.
Right, play a few games. Obviously, not that there's a huge need at the middle high school, but, you know, there's a great number of kids up there, and there are different issues that, you know, we have to deal with at the middle of high school, so the majority of my time probably is going to be spent up there. But like I said, I'm going to make sure in the first few weeks here, the first couple of months, that I set time aside for the Osgood, the DHL, DHL, and we're going to talk to the principals and hopefully get some safety presentations set up, and, you know, we can, you know, that's something we can talk about, they can tell me what maybe the needs are there and what the kids are curious about, and we'll go from there.
Great.
Ellen, sorry.
I actually have a question for Carolyn. In your previous district, did you have experience with an SRO?
No.
No?
We didn't have one. We had a detective liaison, much the way I've worked with Regletta for the past couple of years. So there's a person that you could contact and reach out to directly, but there wasn't someone assigned to the building.
Okay, because I would imagine that you'll probably have to do a delicate dance between the disciplinary elements of your office and the safety issues that an SRO might have to entertain, because I don't know...
Mike and I have met and talked about it extensively, as to what the protocols are and have already briefed the faculty on what is appropriate to go directly to my team and what needs to come to me, and also what student interactions would never happen because in some situations that aren't, you know, if something rises to the level of something that's a criminal matter, obviously, we bring in Sergeant Loebz, we bring him in for a safety consult on many things, I'm sure, as the year progresses. But in terms of student interviewing and student discipline, my, my threshold, if you will, is lower than the police. Legally, I can interview students about an incident just because they're in the building.
Right.
A police officer wouldn't interview a student without parent notification and their parent being present, and so therefore, I have more latitude. And so we'll exercise, we'll exercise that as appropriate. We've had some great conversations already with Mike, and we introduced him to all the students at our opening day assembly.
Oh, great.
Yes, Barbara?
I was just going, it sounds like you're already headed down this road and talking to other SROs who have worked in other districts, but I just, it's, I think there's some, I, my, all my kids are in the elementary level, so I think a lot about that, but they, I just look at some of the stuff they already cover in health or start to touch on in health, it would be just great for you to build on that, or you'd be such a great resource to build on that, as they get some of the basic safety things they need to know if something happens at home or whatever. But, yeah, it'd be, it's, it's exciting to think that you can be a resource to, to add to that, I think the kids will just eat it up.
I mean, it has only been a few days, but I have talked to a few of the teachers that have been involved with health and wellness, and we've already discussed getting together and talking extensively about how we can kind of merge, you know...
I'm sure by grade level, it'd be nice to have like a couple of key things that the kids will learn too, that you can be a big part of.
Well, we did, we did some programs during the rec season, some stranger dangerous type things, you know, and bicycle safety and a lot of other stuff, so we can continue with that.
And he, that's one of the great things, he worked, Mike worked with Ted Carroll in recreation, they come up with some training, but a lot of the kids know him from, from recreation, and Mike was always the one that they wanted on their team. Before, he'd come in the station at 3:00 in the afternoon, he'd be dripping his sweat. What happened to you? And he'd say, laser tag.
And how about a fun day?
It was a good day.
Do any other school committee members have any questions or comments? Yes, we have a question.
Patty Gillis, St. Little Road. Having had two children just graduate in the last two years, Cohasset is a great school system, and, you know, we're very lucky, but now my children are telling me, there is increased adverse behavior and drug use going on up here that I would love to, I know now that, now that Mike is here, Officer Loebz is here up there, it will be deterrent, but I know that the bathroom down by the gym, I think also, I, we sometimes, we have athletic events on a Friday night, so it's big, I think that having police presence in the, in the school, I think that theft in the gym, I mean, my son lost $50 with equipment, and, you know, the cameras didn't work and so on and so forth, so this will be great, but I do want us not to think that there isn't, Carolyn knows this, this, some whiskey behaviors, that kids in a tent, and if they can get away, they'll do it. And, you know, I was alarmed when my two children told me a couple of things that I just...
They never tell you when they're in this building.
They did.
It's amazing the things that you hear after they graduate.
I did call Carolyn right away, I told her, so it is, I think, we just can't rest on our laurels, but now having, you know, police presence inside the building is going to be incredible.
And Mike's office is right, right, yeah.
It's in the gym lobby, at the athletic...
That's kind of the...
Yes, yes, and that behavior that you're talking about is something that we're aware of, and we've discussed.
Yeah, no, I'm sure you are, yeah.
And, you know, definitely, we will, we'll make plans to address that.
Yeah, I just think it's stop to, you know, I think this is great, you know, it'll kind of flush it out.
To that, to that point, and Ron, I don't know if on the, the nights when you have events here and you require a police detail, will Sergeant Loebz be offered the first opportunity, because I think it might, you know, if he's available?
We have collective bargaining issues on our side of the house, so we're still trying to break that out.
Well, I just thought he's such a familiar face and a deterrent, you know, with, with all of the kids.
We'd love to, that's exactly where we want to go.
They need to spread the wealth a little bit.
No, no, okay.
I mean, I am going to try to make it, make it to as many events, you know, as I can, and like I said, you know, there might be, there might be a football game and there might be a detail officer hired, but I still may be there.
Yeah, that's, that's what we're looking at, and if we have, we had that conversation, we're going to work on that.
Very good. Anything else? Thank you very much.
I appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, so the next thing on the agenda is the opening day reports from principals, and I'm going to start elementary up. So I'm going to start with Mr. Vinton, who's sitting in for Mr. LeCount today. As you know, you received notifications, Mr. LeCount will be out for a couple of weeks, so Mr. Vinton was, was there bright and early this morning when I was there, running around the school. He had his Fitbit on, he probably would just go to the house and start today. Would you say so?
I would, absolutely.
So maybe you could talk about today and, you know, how, really, the opening of school yesterday, today, how it's been, you know, we have a lot of new folks.
Yeah, I brought, I brought, being a good adjustment counselor today, I brought some props.
Thank you.
What I have is just some information on classes, where we are, and, you know, just some numbers, just give me a sense of class sizes and where we stand. In the preschool, grade preschool, you see we have 31 total students there. In the kindergarten, we have five classrooms with a total of 108 students. Grade one is six classrooms with a total of 124 students, and grade two, we have seven classrooms with 138 students. As Mrs. Gattuso mentioned, yesterday was the kindergarten orientation, and it was great having them back in the building today, it's, it livened up the building a bit. In grade one and grade two, also, they started yesterday, I think we're off to, I think a fantastic start, I think I did really well, both for the kids and for parents too, for the transition. The building was, it looked, looked great, Teddy and his crew, I know we got a lot of help, I don't know all the names, but it looked fantastic, it was clean, it looked good for the kids, and the, so plan put some new bushes in the front going, heading into on the both sides of the walkway there, so it'll, it'll look nice.
Keep them on the sidewalk?
Yes, exactly.
Right now, there's inflatable sunflowers there.
Yeah, and one of them disappeared already, so...
Oh, sorry. Sunflower.
Probably cut it to take to the teacher.
Yes. See, in August, some members of the Osgood staff and the DHL staff attended a PBIS training. PBIS, if you're not familiar, is Positive Behavioral Intervention Supports. We're going to roll it out at Osgood over the next few weeks, we've kind of decided that as, you know, kids at our age level, they're, they're getting used to just showing up every day, so we're going to let them get accustomed a little bit. The first phase is to start, the kids are going to be neat, they're going to earn fish, of course, show them some promosocial behavior, we're going to start in the cafeteria. The idea is that PBIS, being a data-driven program, will help us monitor what are our strengths and what are those areas we want to work on with skills, and help us move forward there. See, we do have some new teachers in the building. We have a new music teacher, Ryan Montgomery, a new grade one teacher, Alex Sullivan, and they are replacing two teachers that did not return this year, and we have some, two, two new grade two teachers, one replaced a retired teacher, and the other was for the seventh classroom, and they are Lindsay Concanon and Megan Cully, and the fifth, Joseph, I believe his name is Chim, Chim, Chimienti, is the school psychologist shared between... He's the school psychologist shared between Osgood and, and help.
Waylun Marchal.
Correct.
Did she go, oh, she went as a school psychologist? Team chair.
She was a team chair.
You know, one thing I'll, I'll just kind of chime in and say, when I saw Mr. Vinton running around all over the place today, which was great, in terms of you were very involved, he is feeling in, it really was very last second, so it was a compliment to Mr. Vinton. He was able to really pick up and run, but also going in and out of classes, I went in with Mrs. Dean's tape. I was absolutely blown away by the fact on day two, we were walking into classrooms and the orderliness of all of the classrooms, the attentiveness of all of the students. We were in a second grade class that you would've thought you were in a fourth grade class. Absolutely, it was incredible how fast the students have settled in, how fast they were picking up the routines, as far as I saw.
Yeah, absolutely, you know.
Fast than I've ever seen, I don't know if it was the short summer that they had forgotten the old routines or what. But I, I have to say it was a real compliment to, to the building that the kids were in there, lines passing through were so quiet. The kids had the steps down, what they needed to do so fast, and it was only day two. And that doesn't always happen, but it really was incredible this year how, how put together every room was and how great it were functioning when we came through today.
Yeah, it was, it's nice to see. You know, and you had a little bit of chaos out in the front as the kids are getting dropped off and getting off the bus. But as soon as they walked through those front doors, the lines started forming right up the stairs. Yeah, it was something to see.
Yeah. Good, great, thank you.
Your questions?
We have a question from the studio audience. In studio audience.
Um, Holly Child, child CPAC, or breast CPAC process. On the behavioral model that you have put into place, could you expand a little more about, first of all, thank you for having a data-driven. That means we can read the numbers later on and really see the outcome of it. But secondly, this model that you're discussing with children with all different types of, especially in the Osgood area, where behavioral plans do come into place, where are we, is there, not a latitude, but I'm searching for the right word, but unable, able to account for those students who are really trying to work within themselves and still receive the fish, which a fish is a really big reward if you're a first grader. So I'm just making sure that the gen ed teachers are on the same page as what a spec teacher might have already kind of intrinsically know. And I know our, our gen ed teachers get trained in spec, but is this behavioral model taking that into account?
Yes, absolutely, you know. I think the best way to explain it, you know, basically, if you think about it different layers. You know, your first layer is for your general population, for everybody in the building. Everybody's gonna earn a fish. You're gonna find, and we'll find it through data or, or other, you know, I U Ps, whatever it may be, that, you know, a fish for one student is gonna mean something different for those students. And, and that's where training comes into play, with those specific students who may have different needs. You know, we may find, for example, maybe a fish doesn't work for all students. That's okay, that's part of the beauty of it, maybe you can specialize plans that you need to, is that, does that answer your question?
No, no, I, yes, and that, the training of the, you mean, training and training of the staff.
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay, yes, and training of the staff to understand that these behavioral models, a fish to one kid just could be a fish, but a fish could be a very different thing to another student. Who, just keeping it together for, you know, for circle top is success itself.
Absolutely, yes.
So that is, that is, so that is needed to be taken into account. So all the students have an ability to earn the fish.
Absolutely.
Whatever that fish.
We have a question from Byron.
So I answered it, I mean, I know these can be interesting to implement, 'cause I implement them quite often. But, I mean, I think for one kid, you know, if they offer to help a child, I don't know, cut out a thing, they're like, very nice, Judy, you helped, you know, Alexa cut out her fish, that's wonderful, or here's a fish. And for another kid, maybe he says something in a not-so-nice way, and you say to the kid, hey, try saying it this way. And they say it that way, you're like, great, you just got a fish for saying it that way. Like, that's two, like, one kid's up here in an operating level and you've given them a fish for that. One kid's down here and maybe what he did initially was kind of a negative thing, but just by having him practice it doing it a positive way, that's a fish. So it's probably maybe an example of how you can reach two different kids using that type of implementation. I guess my question sort of is, God, teachers have so much stuff they have to keep in their brains all day. And, so, I mean, is this each classroom teacher does it, or are there a couple of classrooms? Or does it happen that you focus on lunchtime and recess, or one special that everyone does it in, like gym? Or is it kind of across the board, or you're sort of rolling it out?
What we, what we've decided to do is, is, this is your first question, yes, everybody, you know, and we're talking to all teachers. I'd really love to have bus drivers involved, the custodians involved, lunch staff, everybody involved. And trained on, on what is a fish, how do you earn a fish?
Right.
You know, the next piece is, okay, so Johnny does this, so he's gonna earn a fish, but maybe Sally does something else, she's gonna earn a fish. We're gonna have this display, we're gonna, it's kind of neat, we're gonna have a fish bowl up on the wall where the kids can go and they can tape on their fish. So the class, so let's say, so in the cafeteria, that's one place we're gonna start to focus, is, you know, being helpful, being kind. What's, you know, what's being helpful mean in the cafeteria? Well, that might mean, I'm gonna help my friend clean up the trash, so our table can get up to recess. So they're gonna work together and they're gonna see, okay, well, everyone in first grade, we've got half a bowl filled with fish. So I wanna be a part of that. And that's gonna be part of the program too, is getting everybody involved and working together, building some teamwork. One of the things that they're worr- working towards is the idea of, I think we're gonna call it Friendly Friday. So when the fish tank is full, the kids can have a lunch period where they get to sit wherever they want in the cafeteria with their friends. It's gonna be interesting to see how that works. So, you know, I think that's part of it, and you wanna keep it positive, that's the whole nature of it, keeping it positive, but also tracking it with the data, saying, okay, you know, gee, we have pushing in chairs, that's going great. We have, the kids have that down, but you know what? They're running out the door to the playground rather than stopping and lining up. And that's what the data is showing us, so let's focus our, our skill build, you know, on lining up versus, you know, not spending so much time seeing other chairs, that kind of thing.
Yeah, I, I like it a lot for the, for the behavior thing, to, I mean, maybe, I mean, having kids follow rules is one thing, getting them to do that. I like the sort of, I mean, if, if everybody's on board, you can create such a cultural change in how students are accountable to each other and to the teachers. And, I mean, I've been, I've substituted in places where I'm just astounded by how accountable the kids are to each other and it affects their behavior in class, and it can be really amazing.
Yes, absolutely.
One of the, thanks, one of the things I'll, I'll say is, this, we've had some things in place already in the district, as you know, because you have young children. This is something that will stretch across from prepay to grade five, which we think is optimal. And this has been used in all kinds of settings, when, I think the question was brought up by Helene, in terms of, you know, will it account for all children? It optimizes personal behavior achievement, I think that's the best way, and it emphasizes pro-social behavior. And it has been proven in urban settings where there might be, and that's not the situation here in Cohasset, so I wanna really emphasize that. But in some urban settings where suspensions were running rampant and students were out on an average of twenty times a year, or more sometimes, that it has shown a reduction in suspensions at the secondary level by as much as ninety percent when implemented appropriately, because it accounts for every student's personality and what each student really needs. And that emphasizes how each student can then achieve and turn their behavior around to be collaborative. So I think that is what's so great here. We don't have that issue here in the district where we're concerned about a lot of negative behaviors, but we have a lot of positive behavior occurring in the schools, but we wanna emphasize it and create a really collaborative environment where all students feel good about themselves. And I think that's partly, I, I would say that's where we're heading, and I think that's why, would you agree?
I would, absolutely.
That lots of what the training was about was emphasizing everybody's assets.
Absolutely, yeah.
Can I, I actually have another little question. Just about the, the classroom size, or the, for the kindergarten, for the twenty-three and the twenty-two, are they, are they, are they have to be spread throughout all five classes, or are they in the bigger classes? And is there like instructional aid support that's different across them?
Is one oh eight? Not sure how, how Mr. LaCount set it up. I would presume that there's more assistance there.
There's only five.
Come back and report. Yeah. There's only five and they were gonna pair them with two, so. So they're two, two in one, or two with three. We were trying to do two with three.
Okay.
So when they were departing, kids went out in groups.
Gotcha, okay. So probably goes to twenty-one, twenty, twenty, twenty-one. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Erin. Thank you. How's your energy level now? All right, next we have Dr. Jennifer DeCare, who will talk about Deer Hill.
So, we also got off to a pretty nice start. Yesterday was our first day of school with the kids. And we started with an enrollment of three hundred and ninety-four students, which is lower than what we had in last year, which was roughly four forty. We traded a large cohort that went on to the sixth grade for a smaller cohort that came in from second grade. But I do think it's important to note that we gained twenty-eight new students over the summer.
So I'm sorry, Jennifer, what did you say your total was in the building?
Three ninety-four.
Okay.
So it was a big, it was a busy summer for new enrollments, many of them coming from private schools. And I would like to report out on some of the work that our faculty did over the summer and were able to share with the rest of the faculty at our building day on Friday. As Mr. Vinton has discussed, we had a team, a PBIS leadership team, and they met for three days. And I think you got a really good sense from Mr. Vinton's description of the idea and spirit behind having PBIS school run. And so we're pretty excited about it. We got started with our rolling out of the instruction to the kids first day, yesterday. And the members of the PBIS leadership team led stations throughout the building where we had clearly articulated our behavioral expectations that were couched in language grounded in our core values of be safe, be responsible, be respectful. And so we have a matrix that we shared with the faculty, what it means to be safe and responsible and respectful in the cafeteria, in the playground, in the bathrooms, in the hallway, and at the sizzle. These are our, kind of our hot point areas that we wanted to really focus on. So the kids went around and they had their, by classroom, and they were treated to some instruction, really, clearly articulated instruction about those expectations and given the opportunity to ask questions, all that kind of thing. The, in the past, the teachers have always taken care of this themselves in their first day routine. But the thing that I really like about PBIS for us is that the ESPs are solely responsible for student supervision in the common areas. And the classroom teachers, every single one of them has built a very nice classroom community within their own community where the expectations for behavior, you know, are, are absolutely, there's, there's never a problem in the classroom. But the ESPs really needed to have a tool that was consistent and coordinated and of status and gave them, you know, authority to reward students for fulfilling our behavioral expectations as well as having a legitimate method of in-house communication that can help us to follow through on some of our consequences for behavior that we're trying to extinguish. So for me, at Deer Hill School, I think it's most exciting as a, as a tool for the ESPs. And the teachers are on board too and are an integral part of collecting the kids' tickets. We're not doing fish, we're doing, it's a circus theme because the circus is so important to us. And even though, you know, all of our allegories about good behavior seem to go against, you know, circus themes, but we still have our three rings. The three ring, the big show, is be safe, be respectful, be responsible. Those are our core value three rigs. And, you know, no clowning around in the bathroom and, you know. So we have little admission tickets that look like little admission tickets to a real circus. And the kids will get those in recognition of being safe, being respecti- being respectable and being responsible. And it doesn't have to mean being stately, it just means when, you know, we catch you doing this, you know, you're doing exactly as we need everybody to do. So the, we have thousands of them and we're really hoping that the system will help us to develop a stronger, more positive school culture. And I'm looking forward to the data collection as well as Mr. Vinton said. We had some teachers who got together to refine our Massachusetts tiered support system. And continue, as we always do, we have for years, every summer, tried to find ways of addressing students' needs through our tiered system of support and through general education earlier and more intensely and with better data collection and progress monitoring. So that work was ongoing. We had a number of teachers who, in the spring and in the summer, participated in a study group to promote executive function in, in a UDL way. By that I mean promote, promoting executive function skills for children across the board. So using strategies according to the universally designed learning principles. So these teachers studied a book called, by Lynn Meltzer, called Promoting Executive Function in the Classroom, and created a teacher resource where executive function skills are described and strategies to help strengthen them are described as well. So many of the strategies were strategies our teachers had been using all along without understanding or, or without knowing its connection to promoting the executive function. And so they pulled together this resource, it's an I-book now that we're sharing in-house, and they were able to share the work there, and so we're in good shape there. We, a number of teachers took the graduate's course in, in writing instruction. And that was, it's still ongoing, that's quite an intensive graduate-level course. So I'm really looking forward to seeing what kinds of ideas they have for us strengthening our writing program. And we have twelve security cameras around the building, so, and from my office, I can, I can see them all. It's really, it's really quite nice. It's really very reassuring to know that from the school office, from my desk, from Mrs. Mead's desk, we can see everything that's going on in the exterior of the building. It's at twelve, twelve different points. So that's really quite a, quite an upgrade for us. We had our fire drill today, and it went very, very well, so that's good. And I wanna just, you know, really congratulate the custodial staff who worked extra hard this summer, pulling our building together, making it look great. Mrs. Mead in the office, I think, you know, it's, it's, people wouldn't know just how much work goes into the clerical work during the summer that's required to have every child, you know, entered into I-Pass with, you know, placements and records and everything updated and all the, all the computer stuff that needs to happen, she does it single-handedly. And the teachers who came in over the summer and made sure that their classrooms were beautiful and that their lesson plans were, you know, highest quality. So that the first day, the first week, the first one, when the kids come in, everything is just as it should be for them. It takes preparation, it doesn't happen by accident, even for our most veteran teachers, it takes preparation, so.
I disagree on the. Good, excellent, any questions?
Uh, it's kind of a general question, but it's more about tracking and reporting in terms of, because I know at Osgood, they said most of their new students who came in over the summer came from Inlee and, I forget where else. But they said came from private schools, so just, it would just be helpful. I'm just wondering if somebody's keeping track of where new students are coming from year over year and when. and when, how many are coming over the summer? And for each school.
Yes, it's a regular part of our monthly principals' reports. I superpede.
Excellent. And I guess obviously we'll have the kindergarten data kept from now on from where that went over the summer. In terms of where we, where we are month by month.
Oh, yes. Yeah, we have a running spreadsheet.
Awesome.
Monthly.
Fabulous. I didn't move as much as I wanted to.
Yeah, that's where we expected growth.
Right.
It's just unpredictable once and then more data that matters.
Right, yes.
But we still have people registering now.
I'd be interested in knowing where these twenty-eight students came from. Do you, can you tell us?
Well, I'll tell you.
Can you tell us quickly?
Yes, we had, this is interesting. One, two.
We know obviously some of them are move-ins.
Four, five, six, seven students from the Kingsley Montessori School in Boston.
From Boston? Is that more family?
Maybe a couple of siblings. One, two, and three, four from the Inlee School. So, you know, that, it doesn't surprise me. At a certain point, you know, I think children or families decide that the Montessori, you know, system is just fine for their children developmentally, but they kind of want to get them into kind of a more standardized.
More structured.
Yeah, more structured. So that's not at all surprising. We have a couple of students who've moved in from nearby and a couple of students who've moved in from very far away. So, but that's, the number of kids coming from private school numbers, I counted it earlier, I think it's fourteen. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, actually fifteen that I know that's been moved in. So.
So pretty certain.
About twenty-three.
So half, half were transfers into the district and half were in district but coming in from private.
I shouldn't say that half of them coming from other towns.
Yeah.
Whether they come to us from an, from another town where they were in a private school to now they're in Cohasset and they'd like to send their children to public schools, that I couldn't say off the top of my head.
Yeah, okay.
We have a question.
My child's CTEC. On the RTI and MTSS changes you talked about.
Yep.
First, you just kind of, what, what kind of changes? Was it just the reporting or how identified?
I don't know. It's kind of a tightening up of the data collection that we expect of the general ed teachers when they bring a child up for a child study team. So that there's, it's really, it's data driven from the get-go.
Good, okay. And is that being bubbled up then to Director Mary Buchanan, Director of Services for inner leadership meeting? Because some of her cuts from last year were, I don't, we, you know, were trying to feather out whether it was also if the final four children, the RTI kids, were involved in those cuts. And we want to make sure that all that information is brought up to Mary's attention while she goes forth to the next Kingsley.
Yeah.
So is that being?
I'm not sure I can make a direct correlation between, you know, children who are presently served under those.
Right, but if you have new kids come under, are those numbers being bubbled up to her? To Mary, to Director of Services?
If we have an, oh, I see what you mean. We have an increase in referrals to child study teams. Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next, we, Mrs. Conley will talk about the middle school and high school.
Hi, Lenny.
Hello.
Nice to see you. Well, we're wide open for business. The children of Cohasset have arrived and it's quite full. It is, we, it is a full building. It isn't over the top. There is plenty of seats in the cafeteria still, but you wouldn't invite ten friends to join you. So wait, really, there are eight hundred fifty students as of today? We had eight forty-eight in my report to Barbara yesterday, two students enrolled today. And so that is certainly the largest in this, my fourth year that I've seen in the past couple of years. It's certainly the largest, I think, it's, had been in a long time. We have almost equal numbers at the middle and the high school. The middle school as of today is at four twenty-three and the high school's at four twenty-seven. So they're kind of equal, but the middle school class sizes are still, are still quite good. And the, the high school electives are larger. Some of the photo classes, some of the art classes are pretty big. The chorus teachers prefer it that way. John Dewalt, the middle school, also prefers abandoned chorus classes to be larger. But the, certainly manageable course loads for all of the teachers. And, you know, Louise was walking the building. I've been out and about the past couple of days and kids have hunkered down and started to work already. It's pretty exciting to see. I don't know, Luke, you want to nod along and say that's for sure? Or, I haven't done a thing in two days about this company. We started our school year, as we always do, with opening day assemblies for each of the grades. I meet the sixth graders right at seven thirty to assuage any fears that they might have, have a little chat, welcome them, tell them that everything's going to be okay. And then I work my way up to the seniors. And as I mentioned, was able to introduce Michael Ope's to all of the students, tell them where he would be located, define for them his role in our building. And especially for the younger ones, say, and when you see Sergeant Mike, everything's okay. He's a positive presence. And to the older kids, when you see Sergeant Mike, it isn't a reason to start texting or heading. Nothing exciting is happening. Just go about your business. So he was really well received.
Don't call your mother.
Kids quite respect him anyway as a, as a community officer. And so I think it'll be a really nice fit. He is being housed in the, off the lower lobby and I do think that that location is critical. It provides another, another measure for us to feel that there's another set of eyes in, in the building in a fairly sensitive area where you can't have cameras, really. So, so we're pretty enthused to have him on board. And we've already started to talk, even before school started, about ways in which you can support various curricula in the building and the health programs. And Jack Buckley's intro to law class, he'll come to Ron's phys ed class which is for alcohol EDU. In my assemblies with students, I said that they may want to bring him into some of the guidance programs, that they might want to go to Sergeant Mike and ask questions around the bullying legislation and what does it really mean? Because they hear it from teachers, they have conversations, they're coached all the way along about it. But they sometimes think we're quite exaggerating one of the ramifications out there in the world. So it'll be nice to have him as an extra voice to reinforce those kinds of things. Exciting changes this year include the fact that based on parent and student feedback around the music program in the middle school last year, we've changed the rotation of the courses a bit so that our band students will play band all year long and not just in kind of an isolated trimester, which we're very excited about. Yay! So they'll have band every, every third day. That will, that will rotate along with their phys ed class and/or each of the grade levels of the middle school, sixth, seventh, and eighth, has a grade level specific course. So for the sixth graders, that's the content literacy course. For the seventh graders, guidance. For the eighth graders, intro to research. So all of those will also meet every third day for the course of the year, which will be particularly nice for Kathy Sarudi and the research programs because, well, ultimately her symposia are elaborate and really well-attended and wonderful presentations that kids do. And she learns a little more every time she does it with a group of students. So now all of the kids in the eighth grade can benefit from the gains they're making. And more importantly, all finish the year with everything's really fresh in their minds for when they encounter Coach A and World History in ninth grade. So it, it creates, I think, some, a bit of equity for the students to have a shared experience. So that's an exciting change there. For parents, the exciting change is that when our welcome back letters went home, we included the updated information for creating an iPass account and having a Blackboard account so that we no longer sent home to parents the three and four forms that have to be filled out at the start of the year. I, I loathe it as a parent. I'm, I'm fine with it as a principal because we need to sort lots of information. But now we'll have accurate information and parents will know that we have their best contact information when things in the family change. So parents have iPass accounts. They can log in and update their emergency information at any time, which I think is just recognizing where we are in the world right now. The scheduling went really well at both levels last year to the point where the guidance counselors who are in the high school, particularly Laura Strazier, said she could not believe it was the first two days of school because never in her career has it been so quiet. So there have been very few scheduling changes, I think, because we've done it. We've tried to do a better job each year of having the conversations early and really making sure that they're solid and engaging in the conversations with students and parents when, when appropriate to make sure that everyone's leaving in June with a very good sense of this is the high school schedule that I want in need and is appropriate for me. So that's been nice too, that they've been able to work with students who are having maybe an emotional adjustment to re-entering school rather than worrying about the logistics. So, other than that, you know, we're off to a great start. We have eight new teachers, five at the middle school, three at the high school. We'll hopefully be hiring another new middle school language teacher. But right now we have a very seasoned professional in who's a retired French and Spanish teacher that I know from working with a thousand years ago at Silver Lake. She's a Melody.
She's only thirty-nine.
And so she's quite, quite experienced and was able to step, to step in on short notice. We're very appreciative of that. But all of our other new teachers, we had some lovely opening days with them, some really good workshops already and good conversation. So we're feeling quite enthused. I'm happy to obviously entertain any questions that you might have.
What did we end up doing with the kids who had originally signed up for Latin and then it, we, that didn't stick?
The four students that ended up wanting that in their schedules chose something else and seemed to be quite happy with it. They did have the option of studying through the South Shore Collaborative VHS.
Oh, great, good, yep.
And for our, our traditional VHS program. And apparently nobody really wanted it that badly. Which, you know, as a, as a person, is a little bit of a heartbreaker for me. So I'm not, I'm not thinking that it's gone. I'm thinking that we have to do something really creative to breathe life back into it. And I wonder if there isn't somebody in the building who might be able to start a middle school intramural. That's kind of an intro to Latin thing. Some sort of a vocabulary builder that would make people think the language isn't so scary so we would have some interest.
Right.
So we can work on that as the year goes on.
I can imagine doing a VHS in Latin.
I know. It's, it's, I mean, it might be, it might be a breath of fresh air considering, you know, some Latin teachers in my past. They did retire and moved to Cohasset. But I mean, you know, it's a little bit, it can be very dry. As much as I love the language and all of the gifts that I think it has given me, it's very dry. So, but you're right. It's, I, if there's no inability to engage in dialogue.
Right.
It's a well-motivated student who's doing that independently, I'll say it, put it that way.
Absolutely.
I love your middle school idea of the Latin. I had that, an English teacher who incorporated a Latin unit and, and I, I mean, I still remember it from, you know, a billion years ago in middle school. Like, I still literally remember a lot of things.
John Amelia and Catherine dug into a beautiful prefix and suffix root unit that, that is focused in a lot of the classical languages. So I, I know I have the people in the building that could really catapult it. And I know that all I have to say to the parents is, you know, it's some sort of very pre, pre-SAT prep and it'll be fit. Because the role is going to be.
Do you have a mechanism to track parents who don't register on iPass or Blackboard?
Yes, we do. We printed off a report last year and started reaching out to parents individually who we, who we knew were not in the system. So for example, if I choose to send, as I did the other day, an email to middle school families and it says four hundred twenty-three contacts found, three ninety-nine, when I get to emails, I know there's four people who might choose not to have an email contact but might have just put it in the wrong spot. So those are families that we can reach out to. And now we've, and on the directions that ask them to contact Kerry Sandler so we could write and rectify all those.
I have a question that's similar. Now, if you were already registered for iPass before, you don't have to do it yet?
You're good, you're fine. And some, some families were having a difficulty for a few days of adding a student. So you had a student perhaps in the eighth or ninth grade already. You have a brand-new sixth grader. The system wasn't letting you add, but that glitch has been addressed by Ron Menard.
I won't be adding any new.
No.
Any other questions?
Well, lovely to see you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming out.
It's my day later.
Sorry for the delay.
So, can I ask just a quick question just about enrollment numbers a little bit? Because things shifted a little bit since, let's see, the original, the report we had, I think, like on August sixth. So it does sound like things will shift a little bit again probably before our next meeting, not too much. But there'll be a couple that come in and go out.
And, and one of the, one of the explanations, am I speaking out of turn?
No.
Nope.
One of the explanations is that we have even a student today. I shook the student's hand three weeks ago and, and knew that the student was moving away and the parents hadn't officially withdrawn the student. There were approximately three students in the eighth grade, say, who were on people's roles still. And I'm confident they're on Morrissey Boulevard, BC. So, so some of them, yes, there's a paperwork piece. The parents have to follow through on. And then in the midst of that, we still do have new families moving in. So there's definitely a little bit of a give and take. I would say settles down by the time, probably by the state has us do that report.
Right, in October first.
October first. We'll have our best sense.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for speaking, Matt.
You bet. To be, to be honest, we're going up CSU to some business. So it wasn't that exciting.
I didn't see much of it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so next, I asked Louise Demus if she would come and talk about the mentoring program because to me, that is a critical piece in introducing our teachers into the Cohasset public schools and helping them to acclimate and giving them the tools they need to be successful in the classroom. And every year, it changes ever so slightly. She'll tweak it in accordance with the teachers coming in, but it was a big group this year. And so I asked Louise if she would come and talk about what she discussed with the teachers. We had them come. The very first day they came was on the twenty-sixth of August. And our new teachers were building-based, meaning they went to their appropriate buildings where they were being assigned. But then on the twenty-seventh, they spent the day with Louise. And so I was asking her to come and, and really report out on our new teachers.
Thank you for having me. First of all, the mentoring program was established in two thousand and one. So it was fifteen years old. In April of two thousand and fifteen, it's been revamped. So it's now more accountability. It's online. As of June two thousand and sixteen, we're going to be reporting a great deal of this to the state as to what we did, who we offered it to, how many years, et cetera. It is also for first-year teachers who have an initial license and move into the professional license, which is the next step. They must have this mentoring and they must have. The documentation comes from me and goes to the state when they apply for a license. Without having that mentoring, they're not, they're not offered a professional license. So it's a requirement of the state for any teacher who's new to the profession. And that requires that they have a mentor that has been trained as a mentor for an entire first year of their teaching. And above and beyond that first year, they're required to put in another one hundred hours over the next two years. So it's a three-year program, hoping to retain teachers who historically, statistically, have left the profession within the first three years. And it's never, or it's rarely been about the classroom work. It's been about everything else that comes with the job, that we've made it look easy for them and then it becomes overwhelming. So what we have done is the new system, the two thousand and fifteen, has aligned itself with the educator evaluation system and the standards. So it's much more aligned, much more cohesive. So everything falls into place for professional development. What Cohasset has done, what this mentoring program requires is that the new teachers have one day of an induction. And that's that day that they spend with me And that's that day that they spend with me as a trained mentor or administrator in the district. They are to be given the lay of the land for the, the culture and the community. Uh, they're to know the policies and procedures of the district. They're to know what the curriculum is, the access and, and all of basically who we are and what we expect. And that's what that whole first day with me is about, meeting all of those standards. What Cohasset decided to do, and it's part of the contract that's been from the inception, is that we've added, uh, the stipulation that every teacher, whether experienced or not, who comes to Cohasset, is given a mentor. So whether it's a fifteen-year teacher coming to class for the first year, there is a one-year mentoring. And the mentors have to be trained in order to, uh, participate. Teachers volunteer, uh, to be trained as mentors. And they must have professional status, which means they must have taught in this district for three years, regardless of where they've taught elsewhere. Uh, the training is a required fifteen hours for mentors. It is done by someone who is trained either by the state or trained somewhere as a trainer. In the past, I think that trainers have been hired. Luckily, you get two for one with me because I am one. So I've been doing the training for the last three years. Last year, I promised I would do it every other year. And teachers emailed me in February, so I'd say, pick me, pick me. So I did seventeen in May. Uh, early June, we had seventeen teachers who were going into their fourth year, who really wanted to give back and wanted to mentor new teachers. So we spent three days together and developed some changes in the mentoring program that were very, very positive. What happens once we have, uh, these mentors in place is I send to the principals, when we have the hiring list in the summer, the list of all certified mentors. They in turn decide who would be best. Either they try to get them in the same curriculum, proximity of room, uh, interests, who they feel would really, uh, work well together. And they send the recommendations to me. I'm going to meet with the mentors on the ninth, which is next Wednesday, and give them the contract and the expectations. The expectations are they keep a log. If teachers have, and these will change, uh, if the teachers are, have decided that they have an experienced person, we don't want to go through the, you know, class management, how to do the, all the preliminary kinds of things that new teachers need to learn. They will report to me routinely on what they have done. So they have to keep a log of the hours they have spent. They're required to spend fifteen hours. I've yet to see a teacher who's spent less than twenty-five. It's just that kind of thing that they have. Part of the requirement is that the new teachers observe the mentor in action. Regardless, if it's a psychologist, a music teacher, they have to observe what's going on. And in turn, the mentees, uh, are required to observe the more veteran. What the new mentors, uh, developed with me last spring, they had a great deal to say about how do I observe and what do I do? They themselves developed a template based on the standards for teaching that they're going to observe with the new person. So the new person will conference with them and say, I really want you to work on these standards with me. Will you observe that in the classroom and give me feedback? So that's been one of the big changes. The other big change is Cohasset has decided that one day wasn't enough for an induction, which is a requirement. So we have given it two. The first day goes to the principal. The mentors are invited for both days. The second day, they're just invited for breakfast and they're escorted out. So, because this room is just not big enough. We were the first to use this room, incidentally. The glass was just dry and we brought the chairs in. It's wonderful. But the first days in the building, they get the policies of the building, the expectations. They look to their own. Uh, the principals in each building give something a little bit different. Carolyn felt that it was very important that they know how to use baseline, do a lot of the online kinds of things that are required for them, attendance and so on. In Deer Hill, it was very much policy driven, what's expected with the policy, the handbook, uh, parent expectations, et cetera. So, uh, they did that. The second day was very interesting because they got to be with me all day long. And I get to have it all to myself. What I did was, we do have an agenda, so I do have that for you. It's easier to do. Part of that is going through what the expectations are for the district. And of course, we serve them. The old adage, that if you serve them food, they won't kill you. Because they owe you. They were an absolute delight. There were eighteen people in this room, uh, new people. There were a couple of people who, um, for one reason or another, did not require, uh, attending because they either had experience here or for some reason. But what we did is we talked about the community. They know where all the museums are, where to go, where to get good food, uh, who the people are. The administrators, uh, came in briefly and introduced themselves and, uh, that was a, a great part. Then we went, loaded the big yellow bus with, um, Kelly Dixon at the helm one last time. And Jane Pescatori as our wonderful knowledgeable guide, who told us where they should get their car repaired, where they should buy coffee if they wanted to, all three places. And how to get not, not to go to the beach here, because they didn't have a sticker. But how beautiful it was, the beauty of the community, everything that it has to offer and, um, how to get around. So it was wonderful, they loved it. Even, uh, a couple of teachers who live in the community thought that it was a wonderful idea. I get more every single year. I think Kelly told us there's a rock with a name to it at some place that, that I, I thought that was.
Aime Rock?
Aime Rock. I don't know. Wow, there you go. But when we came back. My community, it's the flagpoles that have names. When we came back, uh, I invited all of the counselor psychologists and, and support staff to join us and those who could, others had commitments elsewhere. Kevin McGowan and Kate Nelligan, uh, did a wonderful job explaining to them the, uh, requirements and legal aspects of five oh fours and IEPs. And then the what to look for, how to be prepared, who to go to, um, how to communicate, all of that. Uh, Mary Buchanan followed that with, uh, the expectations that we have in, in the district. And how to, steps to take, who to contact, how to really, their responsibility to all students, basically. So she did an incredible job at that, too. They had a number of questions. We also talked about, um, we have a few students who are coming in who are not primary English speakers. So that they need to be aware of that and who to go to and, and who is responsible for all of that. We also talked about our mission and vision in the district. And we particularly did a, um, we talked about rigor and how the curriculum is set up, the alignments, the, the frameworks and their responsibility. But there was an article that the superintendent shared with me that I thought was very valuable. It was the twenty principles for teaching. And it involved the social, emotional, the content, the differentiation. And we talked at length about how, what that looks like in a classroom. And they were a very interesting group, they did a great job. And we fed them again. And they ate well. The second session mostly was about rigor and what we expect from our students and what we expect from our teachers. And we talked about, uh, what rigor looks like and simple ways to do it. One of the activities that I had them do was to do tic-tac-toe. So they had to do O's and X's. It just, it's a first grade activity. And then I had them redo it using zero to nine. And what they had to do was two of the aligned tic-tac-toe, either vertical or horizontal or diagonally, had to equal the third number. And we talked about how simple things, even in, in the very primary grades ramped up, add that rigor. And that if we have gifted children, that we bring it to zero to twelve. So it was that kind of discussion on how can we look at our curriculum and take what we need to do and differentiate within a classroom in an easy way. And they all had great input and ideas. But that was very important to get across that, um, every student needs to count. They had, at their placemats, other than our good little gifts that we give every year, um, a starfish. And we talked about what do you think a starfish means? And they all had wonderful ideas that I'd like to adopt. And we talked about their input from students is the most important first. And then they read what my interpretation was. So that we talked about it's important to listen to students and come back. And that was the theory behind our district and that's what we want. And that the starfish is the story of the boy who throws the one starfish at a time and somebody comes along and says, why are you doing that? And he said, makes a difference to that one. So, uh, they had some very, very interesting, uh, pieces of information. I was very impressed with all eighteen of them, they were wonderful. We also talked about Bill Daggett, who was here several years ago. We talked about rigor and creative thinking and application and synthesizing in the upper echelons of thinking. And how that's necessary, particularly for students who do not access the curriculum as easily, that we can't deny that their thinking skills are not there. So we, we came right back to the beginning of the, of the day. And we wrapped it up with what is it like to be mentored and what mentees? And I found that, uh, when I did the training last spring, it was very evident that I had not emphasized enough to the mentors or to the new people that confidentiality is the number one aspect of being a mentor. The mentors are not allowed to tattle. They're not allowed to go to the principal and say, hey, guess what, this is going on. The principal is responsible or the evaluator is responsible for reviewing and, and this. This is a safety net for new people. And they were pleased to hear that. I am the mediator, so mentees can come to me, mentors can come to me. I in turn cannot tell. So it's that safety net for them that works. So it was a very, very profitable day and a pro, and the second day was very, very helpful. That was the mentoring. I meet with the mentors about four times this year. Uh, we also have a book that the mentees are reading and, or hope they are. And, uh, the mentors are going to be doing with me. It's called See Me After Class. And it's, it's about all of the teachers who give advice to new teachers about what not to listen to. Typically, not to listen to veteran teachers who say, don't worry about it. Because you are worried about it. So, um, I'm, uh, it's, it has some humor and just points of discussion. So in May, they submit their logs to me and they get a meager stipend. Do you have any questions? We have approximately right now, uh, forty-nine mentors available in the district. We have twenty-one, twenty-two, I think. I think we have thirty, we have twelve at Osgo, one in every grade, including, uh, special ed. At Deer Hill, we have fifteen, one in every grade in special ed. Middle school is ten, same there in every aspect and subject. And special ed in all areas. And high school has twelve. We now cover all subject areas. Sometimes it's difficult. If we acquired two science teachers at the middle school, it might be difficult to get two. But the mentors that we have this year are more than excited. They're calling me and saying, can I call them now?
Yes. Of the eighteen new teachers, I think you said, how many are in the, the early part of their career where this is required and how many are just new to the district?
I would have to go back and look, but I think it's.
Three are young.
Three are young.
Okay.
Three, uh, and it's possible that one of them has already had all of the mentoring. I don't think it's their first year. But needed the induction.
Okay.
And the other two are required. But it's also difficult to know if, where they mentored in their last district, that I don't have. That's their responsibility. Any other questions? This is wonderful.
Can I ask one quick question?
Yes.
Just something interesting. The, the top twenty principles for pre-K teaching and learning, is that something you could Google and it would come up online?
Which one are you talking about, the article?
Uh, the work, the, um, the article, yeah, the article that you said that you guys went over.
The top twenty principles?
Yeah.
It's an excellent article, it talks about all the nineteen principles. We did that in a jigsaw. I tried to do the entire day in giving them pieces of pedagogy or history techniques they can use. So we did that in years and it's changed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So moving on, the next thing on the list, uh, you had in your packets were the emergency medical response plans. So, uh, you got the first part. The second part was not finished because I was waiting for lists, it was like this. Um, I got the list of the individuals who are actually involved in the plans. Those were coming in over the weekend and through Monday morning. And then they were uploaded to the state on Monday afternoon. So one of the reasons why you've never seen this before, back in two thousand and twelve, new law was, uh, put into place requiring all districts to put together emergency, uh, response plan. And then those were uploaded to the state, they were good for three years. And then they came due this year. Well, we didn't have one because in two thousand and twelve, I was one of fifty superintendents who never got the email. And when they went in, DESI never notified us that they didn't receive one from us. So when we got the new one, we had to initiate the plan this year. So over the summer, I worked with Ron, I worked with the school nurses, I worked with the building principals. And I, we came up with the medical emergency response plan that I sent you. And then additionally, we had, and I did not make copies tonight, but I did want to reassure the committee that each school has a plan that looks something like this. That in the beginning, it has, uh, the nurse, the principal, just the counselors, secretaries, the extensions. It talks about the AEDs, how many are in the schools, as well as where they're located in the schools. It identifies whether, if there's an emergency, and this probably went to your question about nine-one-one numbers, uh, what happens in an emergency, who should be contacted, what's the protocol? That is in here as well. We're not a district that has a direct nine-one-one call in a classroom that a teacher can pick up the phone, dial, and the police will be there for a medical emergency. But there are procedures as to who they should call and what the extensions are. And we identify who is AED trained, who is CPR trained, uh, who is first aid trained, who's restraint trained. And then as far as EpiPens, everybody is trained. There is no one in the school district, including myself, who cannot give an EpiPen, which is great. And the new EpiPens that Judy Collins introduced, they're talking EpiPens now. Instead of being the round ones, they're the flat ones. And she demonstrated and it was like having Siri at your hands, telling you exactly what to do with the EpiPen. So we have one for each school. And that got submitted on August thirty-first, which was the date that the DESI expected to be uploaded. And of course, the question is, well, what happens next year if there should be a, a change of names? We would change that internally. The state does not require us to upload any changes until three years from now, when we would redo the plan once more. Uh, I don't know how long it will be that way in that law, but at least it's there, it's in place. We received notification yesterday that they have it, they've accepted it, and it's all uploaded in place. So that's why I wanted you to have that, because all the schools have it. The question was, you know, have we done medical emergency drills? Well, we haven't because we haven't been able to, not knowing we needed this. Now we've had that, that will be brought to the principals when we have our leadership meeting this coming week to talk about what those will look like. But I did want the committee to be aware this exists and that we have it in place.
That document that you have, um, the two-page one, how is that disseminated to the teachers?
This will come through the principals.
Okay. Is there something posted by the phones in the classrooms that tell teachers who to call in the case of an emergency?
When they get a copy of this, that.
Okay.
We haven't, you know, because school just opened.
I think we talked about this a couple of years ago.
We did.
About having it posted.
Yeah, we did, well, there have been things posted. In fact, with a lot of the painting and work, things have come down. That's one of the items that even on the fire, uh, cheap, when they walked around doing the fire inspections. That was one of the things they said, you know, you don't have any signs of any more. So there's a lot of work that will be done, but these will come through the principal now that school's open.
Um, I assume this is only for during each building's respective school day?
Yes. Well, there's some information in terms of who'd call after-school hours.
Okay.
Yes. So, um, you know, we have it for the, during the day, but after hours for assistance for first aid or other emergency, including administration of the EpiPen, refer the list of the trained staff on the attached list if they're in the school. I know in terms of Ted Carroll for the after-school program, he would have something completely different. We're not responsible for the after-school programs in our schools. Because they're not part of our schools. Only if they were part of our schools would we need to do that and detail that out. Any questions? Okay. So we're good for three years. All right, next. There's a lot of paper today. So next are capital items. Start with this. There's a number of lists that I'm sharing with you. Not all of them would be under our purview, but we want you to be aware of what's involved with the schools. So the one I just gave you was for the facilities, which would be under the auspices of Mark Kelly. And this, and I put on really large paper because if you don't, you will need a magnifying glass. Comes in so small. This is the IT piece that they have on file that is being reworked by Ron Menard as we speak. And then the last piece. This is what the Capitol Agreement Plan for the schools themselves. And of course, we cleaned up the list because there were a number of things on that list that have already been taken care of. Yeah, we made it as large as we could. I would have had to get a toaster board for the next size. So why don't we start with, because I know this is something the committee asked to look at this year. And certainly in the past, we really have done it and have presented anything that came up afterwards that we turned in. The Capitol Committee is waiting for this, so we want to go through some of the things that are here and really who's accountable for making sure these items take place. So under the facilities, you can see there's a list of items here. Uh, I had questions about a couple of items as far as whether they have been taken care of. And I wrote. And I wrote to Brian Joyce about some of the specific items. And because Mark Kelly is on vacation for still another week, we can't have everything identified. Once he identifies what's been taken care of, certainly, we'll get back to you on that. Some of the things we know that they have to look at in concert with everything else that's needed in the town. So we can't say necessarily to put forward, for instance, the Osgood railroad emergency entrance, which was a discussion point last year, but was decided it wasn't as important as something outside needs to be done in the district. Outside lights at the schools, that might be something that will come along now that the cameras are up. High school gym air handlers, I cannot tell you where that is for the moment because Mark isn't here. An AC unit in the headroom at Osgood, we know that that will rise to the top of the list this year. There is no AC in the headroom in Osgood right now. And it's about ninety degrees and that's one of the worst things you can do for the service and switches and so forth, having them in those hot rooms all day. So we put that on the list, as well as an AC unit in the small utility room by the gym entrance where there's a couple of switches. So- No, that's, I'm sorry, that's at the high school, my, that last one is in the high school here. So Ron and I walked around and found some of these items and we put them on the list for Mark Kelly. And when he gets back, we'll be discussing the order, but that would come under Mark Kelly. And if the committee felt passionate that something here should rise out of these facility things, we certainly would relate that information to him. But I know that in terms of the technology and the investment that's been made by the town, that the AC units will definitely bubble up. And I know that when I was pricing them out, we were trying to get a sense of pricing them out there, with the installation somewhere between five and seven thousand each, just to give you a sense of what those costs would be. Are there any questions on the facilities?
Any idea about the outside lights for the schools?
Well, we'll, we'll talk about that. There hasn't been any finite discussion yet because we haven't sat down. But these are the items that are on the facilities list. And so I, I mean, I can obviously advocate for them, but I can't tell you where they'll fall in the priority list. And I'm happy to report back to the committee, I just can't answer that yet. But we wanted you to see what Mark Kelly had placed on facilities that impacts the school in any way. And that was the point of that list. The next list that you would look at is the one with the brown, and that's the tech list. This is really Ron Menard's area. And Ron Menard is working with myself at the school items. And he's working with the town side for the town items. And that's why a lot of these need to be changed. But the top item is obviously the digital learning replacement upgrades, classroom instruction, laptops, and so forth. Talking about what needs to happen in the town. And we are looking at all of those numbers across. Now, it didn't come off when we uploaded, this was the fiscal years. But this year, where you see the seventy-five thousand, that would be fiscal seventeen on the top row. I didn't realize that didn't come off when we moved the column over. I'm sorry, the seventy-five thousand is fiscal seventeen. Seventeen. Just so you know, so the fifth column in is fiscal seventeen, which is our concern right now. In any case, these items I'm going over with, with Ron, and I know we discussed some of it with you. You can see that the Twenty-First Century Classroom at the middle high school, most of it's complete now. There might be one class that we have to check back on. We are talking about what we'll do with IT replacement equipment because we know, you know, laptops, desktops, there might be a camera that needs to be replaced, things like that. Upgrade of switches, firewall bandwidth backbone switches, I know he's talking about what needs to happen there. Right now, you can see there's a blank, but we know there'll be something placed in there.
Yep.
We don't know what that number will be yet. He's looking at the telecommunications upgrade, there's a phase one, there's a phase two. Clearly, there's the school side, there's the town side, it's all meshed together. We know that there's conversation on the town side as to the timing of when they would work on the town hall upgrade. And I'm not even sure what that would entail, whether that's a complete tear down what you have and rebuild, or that's refurbish what you have and add on.
We don't know.
I don't. Ellen has it. Sorry.
No, on the telecommunications upgrade, phase one, phase two are in the same fiscal year.
Uh-huh. And because I don't know what's happening with the town hall, we know they're not going to invest in a phone system in a building that's about to be refurbished or torn down, clearly. So if they do anything, they'll look at the school side first. And I think one of the things Ron and I talked about was designating a single school to begin with, to be in the phone system, not doing all three schools at once because we don't have the fiber and we don't have the, probably the cash flow at this time. I recommended that we do the middle high school first. But again, that's not even a confirmation that would happen, but to let the committee know where we are. The special PC replacement fund, there's nothing there right now, we're not sure what would go in there yet. We're working on that. And the safety and security project cameras, you can see that the fiscal sixteen had a hundred and seventy thousand in the line item right now, there's nothing in there while we figure out what needs to go in there. And I know we've had that discussion with Ron, we've shared some of that information with you. So that's where the technology or the IT piece stands. Any questions thus far on this? On the last page, the, with the two charts. This is the school department. You can see we have replacement upgrade of technology for classroom instruction. And fiscal seventeen is two hundred and eleven thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars. We're not sure we need those funds at this moment. It was just written across because I think they weren't sure what was totally going to be dedicated. Remember, this was developed a number of years ago.
Yeah, I think that from my perspective, if I look at what's on the previous sheet we just reviewed, that seventy-five thousand, I went back to the plan that we submitted to capital budget and totaled up what we had proposed under the leasing model, and it's seventy-five thousand dollars. So that, that number resonates with me as it relates to just the digital learning piece-
Correct.
For the rollout of the middle high school, plus the ongoing lease for Deerhill and Osgood, plus some of the, you know, smaller stuff, so.
Right. And so what happened was all the way back in fiscal thirteen, you have just noticed this was a five-year plan. We were trying to roll out those five years then. As we started to move up, they haven't taken everything off yet. So two years ago, we weren't where we are now. So undoubtedly, those numbers are going to change this year. But I didn't change the chart for you, I left the chart in the form it's been for the last several years.
But the communication to capital presumably is that we're not, the school district itself is not going to be making the request. IT is going to be making the request on our behalf, so-
Yep.
I mean, it seems obvious to me that this is redundant line item. But we've communicated to capital budget that way, that it's redundant line item.
Right. And if it's anything that is dealing with the school when Ron Menard goes before capital, I would be with him.
Yep.
But I just wanted you to have the original chart.
I do, we won't be asking for two hundred and eleven thousand.
Yeah, let me make that clear.
We won't get it.
We will not get it either, yes, you're absolutely right. The Osgood school playground replacement is slotted for the fiscal eighteen year, fiscal year, two thousand and eighteen. That's for the Osgood, dealing with the fact that we know it's not the correct size.
And just one thing that we should note on the Osgood, the CBC rules change from when we did the last Osgood playground to when we did the most recent one in Deerhill. So the good news is that, you know, whatever we request for Osgood, we can hopefully get CBC funding.
Yes.
Significant CBC.
Wouldn't that be nice? But that's, again, it's here because we know it has to be done, but we won't be looking at it for another year. The emergency generator is, you can see, is put down for fiscal seventeen, there's a hundred and sixty thousand dollars in there. It's been there many times before it's come off.
Can I ask a question about that, given that we have the generator at Deerhill? I mean, I stated differently, is there a generator for the middle high school?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so literally, Osgood is the only building that doesn't have a generator.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
We would like to be able to put something in place there. We know that there's a generator at Deerhill, particularly because you have the EOC at Deerhill, so you have to have a generator in there to keep it up and running. But we feel it's imperative that we start to turn our eyes on Osgood. Because, you know, when the electricity goes, goes down, we've had power outages. At one point, we were bringing students from Osgood over to Deerhill to share space until they could bring the power up. In the summer, that's not so bad, but when it's January and five below zero, it's not so good.
We actually worry more about it going down and having a pipe freeze and us causing structural damage.
Absolutely.
That is more expensive than a hundred and sixty thousand.
Right. No, absolutely. It's been a good number of years, it hasn't come forward yet.
Ellen. On, on that line item, in the top grid, it's a hundred and sixty, but in the bottom, it's two fifty.
Don't ask me why, it was put in by somebody else. But we had originally dedicated a hundred and sixty, was the number I had been given. I'm only giving you the list that we were sent by Brian Joyce. I'll sync that up to him though.
Yeah. It seems like, it seems like capital has some reconciling to do over their spreadsheet.
Yes. But the important thing is that the generator, this is the year to be talking about the Osgood generator and weighed against all the other things that we're asking for for the district. And in addition, we don't know what other groups, whether it be fire, police, DPW, what they're asking for. And then the waiting by the capital committee to decide what's the most important items for the town. So it could be they say, you know, this is the year we really should do it. It could be they say, let's put it off still another year. Air conditioning for the high school fitness center, twenty thousand dollars in there. It is warm, but I'm not sure that will be the priority this year, just so you know, but it's in there. And then pushing out, you can see two thousand and eighteen, we'll deal with those later. But the biggest thing to keep on your radar screen, if you notice under two thousand and eighteen, the alumni turf field, replacement of the turf, there's a half a million dollars dedicated to that. So, and that is a very large item.
So after ten years, it's been- Yeah, because it's all get opened in the fall of, of two thousand and nine.
Right, and, and fiscal eighteen would be obviously two thousand and seventeen. But it would take, I'm sure, good a time to get it put through, bid on, accepted, and so forth.
No, because I remember, I remember when we did it, you know, it was the latest technology and it had been so new that there had been no life expectancies planned for it because no one had it long enough for it to wear out, so is this going to be moving?
And I think that's what we were told at the beginning, but, you know, that may move out as we get closer.
Yeah, if we discover it's not needing a change, then I imagine they'll push it up. But we have it there as a target date.
We do maintain it, we, we've added the rubber pellets recently, you know, so that may be pushed out.
I was just looking at the vehicles at the bottom. We have this bed van. Which, which one is that? Is that the W or, or?
No, that's just the regular sub piece.
That's the, that's the Dodge sped van?
Right.
That has ninety-five thousand miles and we're expecting it to get another-
Two thousand and twenty?
Well, no, what-
Well, we were trying to, I think we were trying to hold on to it for ten years, that was the, the goal.
My point around the, just macro point before I jump into the details is that we've got a minibus, two thousand and one, at, at eighty-nine thousand miles. We have a W sped van, which you have in, at eighty-five. And you have this, the Dodge, which we have being replaced in four more years, five more years. It already has ninety-five thousand. I think we need to, I think we need to move this bed van maybe to this year or the next year.
We can start with this year.
Yeah, we can start with this year. And I think we also need to get the minibus, the athletics minibus on the list. It doesn't have to be this year, but we need to get it on the radar screen.
It was on.
I don't know, I don't see a-
No, I don't either, but I think it was there at one time.
Okay. It comes and goes.
You know, I think when we, if you go back two springs ago, it was, the minibus was on the radar screen for a two thousand and sixteen replacement or two thousand and seventeen replacement, so let's put it back on the radar screen.
We will.
I think with the change in the leasing of the buses, it, it fell off to the side. But I'm happy to put it back in there and move it back a few years. Because we don't need the wheels coming off while we're driving.
So at this point, does the, oh, I'm sorry, Barbara.
I just have a question, because I have no idea what the steps of the track is. Is there, is there an issue with the track right now?
No.
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 So this is just a, like, full word view for it, but it's FY twenty sixteen, so.
It's longevity from when it was put in-
I know, that again, that was told wasn't that's-
When was it?
Ellen said that it has a ten-year life expectancy.
Well, that was the field.
That was the projection at the time.
No, that was the, that was the turf field, not the track.
Ten years.
Oh, okay. We're talking about something different.
The track, we-
Oh, I'm saying high school track replacement, it seems like it's in good shape to me.
It, oh, the track itself does have issues, they've been, there's drainage and then they're, it's a little lumpy, it's cracked. They've been filling it in, but I think Ron is really on top of that more than in terms of can we continue to piecemeal it or must we do an entire replacement?
I get the, I get the sped van first, but.
Okay.
Deerhill, is the, is there any, is that ever going to get air conditioning, like, walled building?
It's not presently on the list.
I know, I know it's, the pile building is old and, and you know, the computer lab and certain parts that have it, and the new park has it, so that's really not on anyone's horizon at all.
It's not, but you know what? You know what, let's put it down and, and I'll put it down and we'll see what we can do if they, if we can, even if it's not woven in now, maybe down the line where it can get woven in.
I mean, the only thing that was put on was, is that it is a simple storeyed building and it wouldn't, you know, it's not the hardest thing to do, and I know it's retrofitting at all, and I get all of that. But it's funny, when you walk in the computer lab, it's frosty, walk up the hallway, it's nineties, like, oh.
What's here? And, and there is inconsistency. Has anybody who comes into my office in all summer did, they saw two windows open a year ago? It was so cold down in this section of the building. So I get that. So we'll put it on the list and see where it could be woven in. Any questions, thoughts, concerns, wishes?
One thought, when you know that these meetings are going to happen, could you please notify the subcommittee to capital budget subcommittee, because we might want to attend some of those meetings?
Okay.
I have asked to be put on the agenda, distribution list, but, you know, if you know you're going for a, specifically for a school program or, or purpose, if you could let us know, that'd be great.
Jane, I have one more question. Is there, is there any way, and I recognize that these aren't your spreadsheets, but is there any way that when we, when we get a fiscal year completed, that we can look at what the proposal was and what the actual was? Because it's just, you don't, you don't know what actually happened, you don't know what actually happened.
We took off some.
We took off things that are completed and done, to take them out of.
Right, but if we could, could see it running year over year, then it would help us address questions of, well, when did we do that before, when is the time to replace something?
And what happens is Brian Joyce sent this out during the summer to us and asked for it to be, you know, for us to input anything they thought needed to be put on. And the district doesn't wish to be greedy in any way. We know there are things that are needed, transportation is critical, safe transportation is critical. We also know that we have to think about the track and the turf and those items that are large ticket items versus a small ticket item. And yes, no doubt, a van that costs twenty-five thousand dollars is quite small comparable to a five hundred thousand dollar turf field. We realize that. So even when we go in, we have to prioritize some of our items. And if they said to us, if you wait one more year for the van, then we can be looking at the turf field, you know. If we're able to do that, we do prioritize that way.
Yes. What I will say, AR technology part, that air conditioning for your technology is on the crucial side.
Well, that's why I mentioned the unit in the headroom.
Yes.
We'll bubble to the very top.
Yes.
Yeah, and that's why we know-
As Kate had put, that that goes.
Right, well, yeah. So we know that, you know, these ninety-degree days, it's been about ninety degrees in those headrooms and-
Do you have any fans in there, right?
That's okay, you're still asking questions.
They, yeah, there are no fans in one of them, I'm sure of. So we do have the door open to bring some of the air in, but I feel for seven thousand dollars, it's a very small price to pay.
It is, for a huge investment.
Absolutely. So we're checking all the ACs, but we know those two are critical.
Yes.
I mean, we, if we felt it was critical for this fiscal year, we could approach advisory for reserve funds to get it fixed before we lose equipment.
Right.
The two hundred thousand dollars in reserve funds, which potentially is available.
Right, so absolutely. So Ron and I, we met today, we'll be meeting again. And then I know that he, Christine and I will sit and meet once more, so- I know that he, Christine and I will sit and meet once more, so since I'll be at all those meetings, I'll just bubble it right up to the top. I agree, I mean, when Ron said, I was not aware that there was no AC in one of the headrooms after all these years, so I said to Ron, it's going on the list, and I put it there on the facilities.
It needs to be there before April of two thousand and six.
Sure, well, we'll talk to Chris when we meet next month.
Okay.
So, but Patty's absolutely right, it's critical. Any other questions about this? All right, so the next thing on there were the new teachers, and because we first thought it'd be great to bring all the new teachers in to visit you, and then we discovered that it may be somewhere after nine o'clock before they got to visit you. It's here, but we did not have them come, because we felt it was more critical they go home and rest, so I would like to just move beyond that, and we'll figure out if there's a way to have the teachers come to a different session.
Okay.
That's all. So, in your packet, you also have the list of two retirees. We wanted you to have where they are, we're creating some very nice charts for you so that you can keep track of those items. Those individuals are being replaced, actually have now been replaced, there are new ESPs in their place already.
And there is an additional retirement that you announced.
Right, well, that wasn't on here, because at the time we hadn't announced it, so yes, Judy Ritz has retired after twenty-five years of being with us. And Joanne Lear is taking her place.
For the Joanne Ritz, who is she?
Judy Ritz. Special education teacher at the middle school, and now Joanne Lear, who was an ESP, has become the special education teacher, and you will hear another Lear in the building, Rebecca Lear, who's down at Osgood, so we have the mother-daughter duo in the district. The status of the deputy CIO hire, so there was nothing to hand out to, but Ron and I have been working on that, because we aren't sure if we will solidify by choosing somebody in the last search. We are probably going to post one more time, we've reformatted the job description, he has sent it to me, I have not seen it in terms of, he came in today, and I have about two hundred emails behind still, I'll get to it tonight, but we will post it again and give you an update where we are, but presently what's happening is Ron is going to hire somebody for the piece that we had for the help desk. That will get filled, for sure, because we know how critical that is, and right now we're using vendors for some of the work to help Ron, so that we don't have any gaps in what we're doing presently. So, we have manpower, we just would like to have a consistent manpower that we own.
How many times has it been posted, once or twice?
Twice.
And how many applicants have you received?
This last round, not many, because we were on the cusp of this new school year, the first time we got twenty, around twenty-something.
And there wasn't anybody in that?
Oh, absolutely, we had somebody who got all the way down to the finish line and then they pulled out. I mean, we had contract in hand and they declined, and it was not the finances, it was just a personal decision. So, the second time, the pool was very, very small.
There's no one from the initial pool that would have been a good person to go back to, or?
No, no. It was, because it was so late, some of those people have already accepted other positions. So, Ron is working with a few different organizations that are in the technology end of things to seek out some candidates, but that's where we are at that.
Yes.
I applaud you for moving ahead and filling the help desk position, that thirty-five thousand dollar position, that will give Ron a little bit of leverage and really hoping that a third time is the charm I've been following this one closely with Barbara, and it's not for lack of effort or interviewing that we're at this point, so I really, I think with Ron's involvement, especially if he's going out to professional organizations that he knows, we will hopefully be able to get that, because that's where the leverage comes for him, and that's what we want to do.
Absolutely, and I will say that we, even though it was for a very short time at the end of the summer, Derek Benson was a tremendous help to all of us in these last couple of weeks, tremendous skill base, has been helpful to everybody.
Did you say you have posted that position, or the help desk position?
It's about to be posted. So, that covers that. All right, and then the next thing. Are my goals. All right, they're right here somewhere. So, I don't know how you want to do this, I know that I met a couple of times with Mary and with Ellen looking at the goals, there are a couple of thoughts I do have on these goals. The average superintendent, well, I wouldn't say the average, the average number of goals by the, is anywhere between two and five. There's seven here, some of them are contingent on teachers being able to assist us, and so I can't answer that at this time, because we've not put out any calls for assistance yet. And so, if there's no takers, we'll have to come back and discuss some of the goals, fair enough. But, I know that you went over them, and I don't know how you want to go through this one, you've all had a chance to read them and you want to ask questions, or, obviously, I think the biggest goal that we really need to be focused on of all the goals that are there is talking about a new strategic plan, we're currently about three weeks behind only because the goals haven't been approved, so we haven't started work on those strategic plan yet.
Yes.
So, I'd love to hear from our subcommittee, that's why we formed it, so you guys could be kind of the people that were helping formulate and doing some of the heavy lifting with Barbara around this, so if you could talk a little bit about how this process came together from your perspective, and I think I'd also love to get an update as to where we stand on the broader calendar that we're going to be using this year for the superintendent evaluation, because I think one of the, not only was it setting up the goals, but it was also setting up a calendar that was gonna?
A timeline.
A timeline for all of us to be on the same page.
So that we'll be on task for everything.
Exactly.
We can tag team here, right?
Sure, sure.
So, one of the things we learned in our governance project last year that the school committee went through, from the mass association of school committees, was a lot, most committees have a superintendent evaluation subcommittee that gets together and meets with the superintendents and just talks through ideas, and we can share what we hear from the community and some things worth thinking about, so this year we were able to do that, Ellen and I have had an initial meeting and then we sat down with Barbara twice, and the tool, if anyone has had the pleasure of sitting through the superintendent evaluation nights, is cumbersome and very lengthy, and we do have the freedom to streamline some of it, and.
I recommend that, do that.
And to make it more applicable to the superintendent's goals, so that's really the motivation behind that, there's certain things in the tool that you cannot change, but there are things called indicators and elements that you can, and you can just hone it down a little bit. So, if you want to elaborate?
Yes, so, we, when we met, you know, with Barbara, she had had her thoughts and we had had our thoughts, and they kind of married up in terms of philosophy and direction, and she, superintendents are required to have a professional goal, a student, learning goal, and then district goals, and so when we talked through all these, we wanted to make sure that we covered all of those bases, and that goals could all, could be a multi-year, could have a multi-year component to them, where perhaps maybe a planner or strategy is implemented, and, no, that's okay, a planner or strategy is implemented for execution in a subsequent year, and so you might have seen some notes to that effect through her goals. Regarding the timeline, you know, the hope is, is that the goals are, you know, approved this meeting or the next, based on the contract, there should be a mid-cycle review, which would be on or about January sixth, which was in the year-long calendar that Barbara had provided earlier, and then based on the committee and the composition of the committee, if we remain essentially intact, we would do our summative evaluation on or about June first, if not, we would do it on May fourth, which is prior to the election. We also discussed that we would, that Mary and Barbara and I would meet at midpoints between those dates to discuss progress, changes in, you know, the environment, I don't mean the global environment, but the school environment that might cause, you know, well, maybe global changes such as another winter. But, so that, so that, you know, the goals can be realistically aligned with what is actually achievable, and we felt very strongly that, you know, the goals should be things over and above the day-to-day job responsibilities, and that's why we were not advocating to have multiple, you know, a lengthy list of goals, but to have some pretty meaty goals that, that could be achieved and could bring to the district some very valuable, you know, long-lived things, and that was a good way to say it, but hopefully you know what I mean.
So, one of the things we did address too, is that in that mid-cycle evaluation, some of these goals, depending on the situation with participation that we may be looking for from the teachers, timelines may need to be adjusted, but we would do that at that point. The other thing we talked about, these are really clean twelve-month or twenty-four-month goals, and so we lost August and we're into September, so January already brings us down, we're under four months there, and if we should do a May, we're under three months there, so we're taking twelve-month goals and you're trying to push them back into seven months for an evaluation process again.
So, one thing that we discussed, Ellen and I discussed looking at too, is once we're on our way and so forth, maybe in the spring, looking at the way this calendar works, and does it work for the committee with the election cycle and everything else the superintendent needs to do. The other thing that Ellen and I will need to do after the goals are approved is start looking at the rubric itself and meaning out some elements and indicators that we can, just to streamline the whole evaluation process, and marrying them right to the goals, so that when you get your, when you get your evaluation packet and the tools, it's just much easier to fill out and think about, and I really think, I mean, both Ellen and I were excited about these goals, and there's some really nice benchmarks and data that we'll be able to look at, so it was a great process.
I think that's great. I actually read through them, I think they're, I think they're wonderful. I voiced my thoughts at a prior meeting when we were going through the year-long agenda, that the people who work with the superintendent should be the ones that do the evaluation on the superintendent, so it's, I feel it's very important to have it before the election cycle, and it doesn't have to be, the summary meeting doesn't have to be before the election cycle, but the people's comments, the members' comments need to be during the election cycle, and potentially, you gonna run? I'm gonna run. You gonna run? I mean, potentially, we could have three people turn over in the spring, so it's very important to have continuity in this process, so I believe it's very important for us to make sure that we have this evaluation done.
Right, but I'm going to bring up the fact that this will be the third year in a row where you're taking twelve months' worth of goals and evaluating the after-six months of working on them and making a full-year assessment based on the fact I've only had six months to cover them, so you have to take into consideration, if you do that, you can really only judge six months' worth of work, you cannot judge it as a twelve-month picture any longer, we've done that the last couple of years, it's not a fair assessment, it's not a true assessment, so I really, these are long-lasting, they're deep and detailed goals, and so if you do that, you just have to recognize, I can really only be looked at for the six-month period, you cannot consider this for twelve months.
Right, but the turnover would cause the same issue.
I recognize that, but I, the tool is based on a year's performance, and if we're not going to do a year's performance, I just want to make sure that the committee is willing to recognize that we're looking at a half a year and making a decision, not a full year.
Well, and we talked about that, and I think to Mary's earlier point is that somewhere within this cycle, we should, if it's agreeable with Barbara, change our timing, and we can determine the period of time whenever we want, it can be a calendar year, it can be a fiscal year, it can be anything so that the turnover of the board doesn't impact the evaluation.
Right.
And the goals are established, so that there's sufficient time, you know, because it should be a year-long process.
Right, and that was going to be my next question of the subcommittee, how do we facilitate that?
Well, I think our mid-checkpoints with Barbara, we can determine maybe when might be the time, and some of these are multi-year, and we could say, okay, well, this is going to roll over, so essentially, we might have goals already established for the twenty-sixteen, seventeen year, and start that process, and split out what should be evaluated in this cycle, and then what portion of that rolls forward, if that's agreeable.
And that's why we like having a subcommittee.
And I'd like to just add one more thing, because you've given some very definite benchmarks along the way, you, I mean, in certain cases, if there's turnover, you evaluate until that point.
I was going to say you can evaluate.
There's an understanding that the goals don't stop, they're going to keep going, so.
You just have to revisit how you look at them, because the tool is designed as a year-long process, you can't really break it into a six-month process, that's the reason why I just want to make sure, because this is, to do a strategic plan and then do these other goals in tandem is enormous work, so.
I would echo the richness, and I really appreciate the richness, and I also, I like the fact that, I don't know if, who came up with the tool to be able to have two-year goals incorporated, there are, you know, out of the mix, you know, half of them are roughly one year and the other half are two-year, but I think that two-year goal not only allows us to work towards having richer goals, which are going to really better the district, but it also gives us some flexibility in terms of that cycle that we were just talking about, so I would, I kind of echo what Ellen was saying, is that with a lot of these two-year goals, it's very easy just to kind of roll it to the next year, and with a one-year goal where, for whatever reason, you didn't get all the way through it, I think, again, I appreciate the richness, and so I can see if we're evaluating you based on only seven months of work on a twelve-month cycle, that some of this may roll, or a big portion of this may roll into next year, and it's a very, very good pace. The only, the only goal that I really needed some context around, because the rest of them really made a lot of sense to me, was the communication certificate, that was one that just kind of came out of left, that came out of left field for me, but I appreciate it, and I think it's, it's such a critical, you sort of look forward, you look at people's future success, their ability to communicate becomes such a critical piece of it, so I'd love to hear the genesis of the goal, and I just had one thought, because a lot of it seemed to be kind of written, that there's a huge piece around oral communications that I don't know if you wanted to even tackle, but I'd just throw that out there as a thought.
That's why I came, I said, I said to Ellen, Mary, I'm not really sure about this goal, and they're like, oh, this is it. And I think that might be in part because you have older children who have gone through the high school and gone through that process, so, because we were really thinking about it at the secondary level. This was really an opportunity, I was looking at the school over the last five years now, and I was looking at the fact that we have a, you heard Ron say, we have a tremendous number of students who are participating in the athletics program, and, but not every student in the school wants to be in an athletic program, and we recognize that, but I want to make sure if children, if students choose not to participate in all of the athletic programs that are there, and a huge number, giving them a lot of options, that we have something else that they might want to pursue in a different vein, and so there are students in the school who are very, very dedicated to music, and dedicated to theater, and dedicated to the arts, and I thought this was another opportunity for students to really get an opportunity to experience the world in a society that they'll be participating in, I saw it as a way, if this, if we're able to really tease this out and create this certificate, that it would be an integrated programming opportunity at the secondary level, where they would have to take pieces from the academic program, I talked about the opportunity for students to go to Columbia, to the School of Journalism as high school students, and take that program and then bring it back and perhaps work on the school newspaper and change how the school newspaper is done, in fact, one of the things who you mentioned was, it really should be online now and not have paper copies everywhere. So, I was looking at the opportunity for kids to stretch their talents with journalism, stretch their talents with academics, stretch their talents with the mass media, and being able to understand many of the facets out there, I thought if somebody, and who just wrote me recently was Bob Nahill, and all of the opportunities, and the fact that he's now working with. and all of the opportunities, and the fact that he's now working with Ellen DeGeneres. And he did many of these activities on his own. He didn't have a program that had been crafted that provided a certificate. And I felt if we could create something like that, that would give students something different that no other school offers, no other public school offers necessarily, that it would be something that, and I know Barbara can weigh in, because she does this all the time, but I was thinking it'd be something that not only would give them a set of skills for the work world and working in a global society, but also offer them something that's very different from their typical curriculum.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it's, Cohasset, the high schools are in a little bit tougher situation sometimes because we don't have the breadth of coursework. I mean, I see some unbelievable courses that high schools are offering across the country, but, you know, you're looking at T.C. Williams and Alexandria, it's like, you know, cutting-edge technology stuff and that sort of thing, and you're like, whoa. Some of the courses they get to take, but it'd kind of be a nice distinguishing thing for kids coming out of a smaller high school. And I think this is, that's an easy one to implement right now. And I'm just thinking, a few years down the road, I'd love to see what's the technologies established, because I love, I just think of my boys, for instance, like, who would like to be taking probably coding courses and learning computer language and that stuff. But that'd be a great one to put out for the next sort of certificate or courses.
Sure. I keep bringing that up, I don't know how you fit it into the day.
I don't know. It might be a club. And of course, in doing this, one of-
They introduce scratch at the lower levels.
One of the things I wanna be most concerned about is that this is self-sustaining. So even if we were to pilot something like this, once it's really been vetted out, if we were to pilot it and if we were to get support from maybe CEM or PSO or maybe from within the operating budget, it has to be sustainable. I don't want this to be a one-year or a two-year opportunity. I want it to be able to continue on and grow or change, whatever needs to change with the way the social media is working today.
Could you perhaps model that after the global competency?
Competency certificate?
We can't even talk tonight.
It might be because it's almost 10.
No, no, but you know what I mean? Because I think that that was one of the first, I think it's the only certificate that we offer at this point.
It is the only certificate.
Right, so this would be another option, and I don't understand, I don't know all of the nuances of that certificate, but perhaps there are components there that you could model.
Absolutely, I'll be looking at that. I'll also be looking at some college-level, like, schools that have similar opportunities for students, see how they can buy all of the curriculum to make it work. And it might be that we get to the end of the year and after exploring this option, say, you know what? This isn't going to work for us, or in order for it to work, we need to do this. It might be something that we put to bed in June or next fall and say, it's not going to work. But if we don't test it out, we're not going to know. That's how I see it. But I really wanted to give students something different for students who might not want to do athletics all the time, or might not want to play an instrument all the time, but want to participate in something that's very unique. I saw this as a way to give them the chance to go out and explore the world.
There, Barbara, have you, you're probably familiar with Coursera. I actually had mentioned it to Mrs. Dean or someone, I mean, if maybe they could model a club on something like that, because I know that they, I know that they teach Python on, that's a coding session. I wonder if they could perhaps use some of the curriculum from Coursera, because it's all free, and offer coding and programming classes modeled off of something like that. And I believe they now have certificate programs, that you can get a certificate for some of the learning experiences on Coursera. It's a fabulous, fabulous online learning experience, run by some of the premier colleges and universities across the country.
So, just to make sure, are you asking me to substitute that for this?
No, 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 but I'm just answering Barbara's question about doing, about kids learning how to code and being able to offer that without it really costing the district much of anything.
Yeah, and I've actually seen it being offered as low as first-grade classes now, that teachers teaching it. It's very basic.
Yep. Okay, sorry.
No, it's okay. I just wanted to make sure, I wasn't sure if you wanted me to change this.
No, 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 no.
Any other, I don't know if I answered your question, I should.
No, you did, no, I, well, first off, I'd love the enthusiasm for the goal, and, you know, second, at first I thought, now that you've explained it, it really ties into that extrapolar piece. It makes a lot of sense.
I think we also have to recognize that this also falls on the shoulders of all the administrators big time.
It's a lot of work.
And that's why, as we get into it, we might discover that we have to pull one out or two out to make this work. Because again, as I said, the superintendent's association says two to five, generally no more than four, and we're at seven. So I think, you know, the only way we're gonna know if we can do this is to start it. And if we can't do it all, we're gonna have to come back and revamp this.
Did you have a chance to talk to Carolyn about it? Did you have a chance to talk to Carolyn about the?
Yes, I did, I did. And again, it was, we have to make sure we can fit it all in.
Okay.
So, I mean, there's several of these goals, involve a ton of organization, and teachers, and guidance counselors, and I mean, it's-
Right. It might not be that we can get them all done in this year, but I think the next couple of weeks we'll be able to determine that as we start. But clearly, the strategic plan is just, it's not a choice.
Maybe some of it will be addressed, but not as of all right now.
So. Okay. Do you wanna take a vote on that?
Sure.
I would.
Are we voting to adopt all of these goals?
All of those goals, then?
Pardon?
Are we voting to adopt all of these goals?
To accept.
Or unless you wanna take something out right now?
Unless you wanna wait till the next meeting?
This is what we're hearing.
But then that pushes us five of the time.
Yeah, we're already back a month, there's no doubt.
Right.
Advocate. I mean, also, you can adjust, I mean, who's-
I was just gonna say that.
If you say goal seven, I mean, maybe the part of this year is the, I don't know, I don't know if you can do this or not, just have the principal and the guidance counselor give you an initial report as to where we need to go with some of this stuff. But I don't know that you need to do everything on here.
Right, well, fortunately, too, that's a two-year goal.
Right, okay.
Because I honestly didn't think that we could get that done and everything else done. The strategic plan might just push everything away.
Got it, okay.
So that's a two-year goal. The study of the middle school-inclusive classroom, that's a one-year goal. The increase in capacity in the area of human resources is a one-year goal. The technology rollout plan is a two-year goal. And we'll be working in conjunction with the digital learning. The social-emotional wellness, that is currently a one-year goal, but might need to be reconsidered as we move through the year and extend it out. Goal two is a two-year goal, and goal one, which is the strategic plan, is a one-year goal.
Okay, that seems reasonable, then.
And I think too, because some of these goals, for example, the rollout, there are already some systems and structures in place. We're not starting from the very beginning there.
Okay, good.
That's what happens at 10 o'clock.
Let's keep on rolling.
All right.
Okay, so do I have a motion to accept the superintendent's goals for the 2015 to 2017 school years?
I'll make a motion to approve the superintendent's goals for the 2015 to 2017 school years.
Oh, a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm being cooler with caffeine, that's why.
Cooler with caffeine, that's a good one. With extra props to share, right?
Sure. Chill, Red Bull.
All right.
Okay, the next piece is very exciting.
All right, so, I can show you all I want, we're gonna hope this actually works. Why?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Are we starting the website?
Yeah.
To go home, you do. I just have a quick question about the website.
You don't wanna stay with us, huh?
I don't, no, I was just looking through, it looks great.
You did see it?
I did see it, yes, I actually-
It's actually up and live.
It's up and live, I've seen it. I was just making sure, I'm looking at the links, the community links. And I just wanna make sure that all the community and school, i.e.
It's not all done.
It's not all done.
You saw there were under-
But you know, I'm gonna get yelled at tomorrow, why can't you get the CPAC? So I'm staying here.
Because we didn't have me uploaded for CPAC yet. And Mary Pam's out now.
That way I got it said, you know.
You tell them that-
If you just cool their jets, it's 10 o'clock.
Tell them I have an hour and a half drive after this.
So as long as, and I was looking through, it looks great.
Thank you.
And I was looking through all the links, and some of them are off, some of it-
No, that's not what we want, boy, that's wrong. Wrong thing, trying to get chairs for you, they won't be lime green.
I was just gonna say.
We're not getting lime green chairs, don't worry about that. All right. But I like the use of Craigslist this year. There we go. All right, I'll pull this down. So this went live today, as you can see, and I know I, we introduced it. If you were at the meeting on the 31st with the teachers, you got to see it. The treaty will not get to see it at large. Catty left. I thought you could see. Anyhow, so we have rotational photos on the main page. Each school has its own rotation of photos, and we'll change those fairly regularly. You won't be seeing these in a few weeks, you'll start to see some more fall pictures and cooler, kids will be more dressed because it's getting colder out, so we'll rotate with the seasons, obviously. But this was a, gave us a good chance to show off the students across the district what they're doing. Teachers were very free with giving these photos, and I thank them. Below here, you can see, and one of the prime things that we talked about was the fact that we wanted upcoming events to be able to show. And so we think we've done a really good job. One of the things we debated, one of the things we debated was where that list should go on the website. And I really said, left side, which is where I start first. And I know Jean wanted that calendar very prominent, so I hope this meets with your approval. And then, thank you, and then, aside from the little items, if we needed to look at the monthly calendar, we have the monthly calendar, and as you can see, the school committee meetings are already in there. And we'll begin to upload all the other dates. I actually do the calendar myself, we color-code it, so that all of the school committee meetings will be royal blue whenever you open the calendar and can see them. And all of that information's in there, and you can go to any calendar you need. So if you're trying to plan, I don't know, next March, 2016, you wanna know what the meetings are? There they are, they're right in your place.
Now, if you click the box, does it bring up the, will it bring up the agenda?
No, not here.
No, okay.
No. But it, we might be able to do that down the road, I just haven't done that yet.
Okay.
So, the other thing is that David Burke was nice enough to do the wheel. Was nice enough to do the wheel, and that sits on every single page. You can also get to the calendar on one of the icons here you can see. For students who wanna know what their menus are, you can click it open. You can log in and put your money in and so forth, it works.
I thought that said my Starbucks.
No, no, no.
It is 10 o'clock.
Yep. You can go right to iPass if you want to, it'll take you right in there. And I've lost myself, excuse me, I'm still getting used to working it. If you want to find a staff member, we wanna say, find the high school principal, we would type her name in. And there you go. And if you want to get all of her information, there it is. So it's easy enough to find people.
If you know who they are.
We're working on having a page, so you can see, there are pages embedded in here already, but within the schools, not a main page. And then emergency information, type out crisis plan, what we've done here and so forth. Again, we have our homepage. We have the district page where you can see everything going on, we'll have job postings, we have the central administration in here. You can get your staff directory, you can find online fee payment. We are putting the student enrollment and transfer information up, it's not there, so you will get these signs until those pages have been filled, just so you know. We have the budget, this is a place where we have a budget, multiple places for the fiscal '16 school committee. We have the members, everybody's here, including Barbara, you're already up and running. And we also have the agendas and the minutes, and those will be filled in. So you'll have an agenda in one column, the minutes will be in the next column, and then as soon as we have the videos that we can click in, we'll put the videos in. So you'll have three columns running at all times.
That's great.
Okay? We have documents that would come from the school committee. So you see, you have your budget detail, approved budget detail, budget calendar, and you have your subcommittee assignments, which after tonight will be altered, just so you know. But we put the old one up for the time being. We have your policy manual, and you can see, you can do the whole thing up at the top. It's not very clear, you probably can't see anything, you might think it's the hour, but it's not. There we go. So not only could you do the whole binder, but you can do each of the sections and click them open now. So you don't have to read through 700 pages to find your policy.
That's a good thing.
Yeah. Eventually, what I'm hoping to do is break it down, so that you get the title of the section and then have the individual policies.
We'll get there.
But we're here, we got here, and that's what counts. And then we also put up, your school committee handbook is up here.
Great.
And I have put up your goals, although if they're gonna change, we'll fix them, but the goals are here. We have our departments, so you can see there's a business department, we have our curriculum and instruction, we have facilities management information, we have MedCo in here, we have the nutrition, and I'm just whipping, I'm well aware, but the lunch program, you see, there it goes, back to the lunch and so forth. The community, we'll be able to do our links as we go through. So you can see the community here, community link so far, there'll be more. We have the school resource officer under construction. Again, we go to the calendar up top, you can go to the high school, and all your information is here, and you have your news, you have your principal's welcome, I think you can see Emmy's right there, Emma Davis.
Yeah.
We have the principal's welcome. We also have, in the academics, everything in the school here. So you not only have the program of studies, you have English and so forth. Here is where you'd also find the athletics for Ron Ford's section, so anything you wanted to know about, that would be in here. You notice here's the concussion management in here, that's all in there.
So, when we had the presentation on the website, I think his name is Mr. David Kellogg, is that right?
David Kellogg, yes, he's no longer working for them.
Oh, okay. I was wondering if Ron's ScheduleStar, which is how he schedules the athletics with all the socially challenged, is gonna be able to download, and I saw earlier today that everything is there, so that-
He mentioned that at the sports meeting, that all the schedules are here. That all the schedules will be here.
On this website?
Yes.
And ScheduleStar as well, right?
I believe so.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Again, there's places for the students, the handbook, library meeting, library, media services, the bullying report form, clubs activities, yearbook, student council, National Honor Society, families, again, they'll be able to go, so you can see, for instance, CPAC is under construction, it needs to be uploaded still. So that's what we have at the high school, middle school, fairly, you know, similar format. Great pictures, but similar format, again, with anything along the side there. Again, running across the top, we can see what the students would have, guidance, whatever information there is, academics.
What's the-
Principal.
Okay, fine, sorry.
Okay, and the school itself. I don't want you to pass out on here, just talk very quickly.
No, no, I'm talking to myself.
Deer Hill, we have the Deer Hill piece as well, again, same icon, so it'll be identical. And one of the things we try, I wanted absolutely to happen, is I wanted it standardized so that every time a student leaves, Oscar to Deer Hill, Deer Hill to Middle School, Middle School to High School, the page was always the same, that there was uniformity throughout. Do you want some more water?
No, I'm good, thanks.
So all the information about the school is there, the school council, the plan, everything is in here that you would need. Here's your school nurse, information, you know, some of it's tweaked ever so little by each of the principals according to what they want, but I did want you to see this. So that's Deer Hill, and last but not least-
Ellen, can you interrupt for one question?
Absolutely, let me go back.
Yeah, so that's what I was gonna, so Deer Hill, I think I was looking, and it's under academics, is that where the links to the teacher websites are from?
Yeah.
Teacher. And so- And so if you click on them right now, there's the websites, it's a, it's just a blank page right now. Is the plan to, at least in the short term, embed a lot of their Weebly links there?
We're going to do some linking, so what happened was, just so you understand if you hear anything, so they rolled the page today. First of all, they're supposed to roll the page tomorrow. And they were supposed to roll the page with the links, so all the high school teachers could get to their pages they've been loading for two days, but they didn't. So we have to go back and reverse that piece of it, and that's gonna take about two days.
Okay.
So if parents are looking for pages to find on homework assignments, they might be two days before we actually see them.
Okay.
And then from there, we'll do some linking, but we also have a transition period that we're going to work. We're working with the company right now, because with the new website, David Calog didn't tell us there was a very short window for transitioning, and we said that was unacceptable. So we're working on a new transition date with School Wires to make sure the teachers have ample time and training to make the change out of School Fusion over here.
Will the teachers be able to sort of explain this whole thing on, on the, at the open houses? Will that be something that they can easily explain to parents in terms of the website, maybe, or?
Well, hopefully, I would assume so, but as far as, like, for instance, Weebly, we have the Weebly contract for our teachers through June thirtieth, 2016. They're not coming out of Weebly.
Okay.
But they might be shifting out of School Fusion sooner.
Okay.
But that, they'll definitely for the time being be links or access to the pages. We just need to reverse what we did, because they didn't last.
Put it incorrectly.
Is there a way to link through, on the old website, I would just link through district email on that website, I wouldn't go right to Outlook. Is there a link here? I didn't see one.
I am not sure.
Okay.
I, that part I'm still working on. But we, and you have a sign-in place as well.
Okay.
You would sign in to get to all of your information.
I don't, I don't understand the question, ma'am.
When I get, I would go to my district email through the Cohasset K-12 site. So I went in through that, as opposed to just, on my phone, I just have Outlook app.
Oh, you know what, I, I, I don't have the app, I always just go right through the, I go through the internet. I don't know how to do the mail.
Yeah.
I keep having trouble getting it there. I mean, I can only access it on my iPad.
I'll show you how. It, it, you don't need this to get into it.
Okay.
On, anywhere.
Okay.
I'll show you later. So anyhow, here's your sign-in that you would have to sign up on to get into the website. You need to be a registered user, but once you are, you, you'll go in and do what you need to do. The other thing that we have done is, and we're working on having translations here. That will be the other piece.
Mm-hmm.
So if we decide to go from English to Spanish, there it is. For anybody that needs it.
Yeah.
If you should just, I'll see if I can find it. If you decide, I don't even know Thai, but there it is, in Thai, should need.
Oh, wow, man.
So we, we're just being proactive. But, just to let you see it, so, go back the other way, because otherwise I won't get that question.
If you, if you put out a Blackboard Connect message or something like that, will that be able, will that be something that's uploaded on the website right away? That kind of thing as well?
I can upload it separately, they're not linked together right now. That was when we signed our contract, it's not something that they put into the contract, but I'm gonna talk to them about, because it might be to move out of Blackboard and just use this exclusively. But we need to really vet it out a little bit more before we make that kind of a move. So we will be doing Blackboard for now, and then what would happen is, let me get to the front here. Here, under announcements, I will upload announcements. And then there's also the CPS news, and you can notice I had new faculty and staff. I am working on spacing, I haven't quite figured that out yet. But you can see, we put all the new faculty and staff there for everybody to see. So everybody would be aware of that. And I'll be able to play with that as the year goes on. And I, I mean, there's a comfort level that we're all coming into. So we've gotten very comfortable with the calendar.
It's so much easier to navigate and use.
Yes.
That's a lot of work that everybody did, to get all their information in, so congratulations to everyone.
Thank you. So that's, that's where we're at. Does anybody have any other questions about it?
I don't.
I'll tell you, I had a hand coming up.
Well, I just wanted to follow up on the conversation we had last time about this, in terms of, this is fantastic that it's up and running, but in terms of ongoing maintenance and, you know, who's responsible for each of the pages, you know, each of the different buildings, but then within that, the different pages, have you had a chance to kind of figure out what that tree will look like?
Yeah, I mean, the principals are pretty much taking charge of their own sites. They've been trained how to do that, and I'm doing some of it as well. And then, like the calendar, I've been running all the calendar, whether it or not. And then Jennifer Saritas and Erin O'Neill, who are the two admins in here, gifted. So every time we have a question, we just go to them, say, how do I do that? And they say, oh, just send it to me and I'll upload it for you. So we have our two admins, and then we have each of the principals, and then Ron Ford is doing his own work, because he's trained. Louise Deanas does her work, because she was trained. Dave has done some of it. I, I know you, you sat with Erin during some of it, but you did some of it as well with Marilyn. So we all got trained how to do it individually. And then the two specialists we have are clearly the admin specialists who can help out.
That, and that's the key for me in terms of, at least this district piece. I would hope that Jennifer could take a big load in terms of keeping this updated.
Yes, and so, you know, like I said, you'll see the photos starting to rotate out, you'll see the announcements, and then we'll be keeping an eye on it. And when we meet in leadership, they'll hear, you know, the site's getting a little stale, so that they'll know to update. If there's something to update, they will. But such as no school announcements, that will come from me on the main page. We'll still send out the Blackboard messages. We're still going to post to the television stations and the radios and so forth, every avenue we can. Any other questions? Well, congratulations.
Yeah, that's great.
Okay. Now we just have to get your photos on. We can upload your photos with your name.
That's okay. Do you know, there used to be a picture of the school committee every year.
Well, we can do, we can do each, actually, I haven't any recent ones, it's only be time to refresh.
Maybe we should have us come in for a lifetime.
We don't need to have the lifetime photos, but, all right, so everybody's feeling comfortable with what you saw?
Yes.
And what's, I know you're doing your goals again today, we'll upload whatever. If anything changes, we'll upload that. Now we'll upload the concussion policy, so we'll be doing those things, so, okay?
It's dripping.
All right, I have no idea how to turn this off.
Can I, random question, just because a CSCR just, that popped up with Mr. Buckley. Is that officially connected with the school? That would be another really interesting down-the-road certificate.
That is not connected with the school.
Yeah. I just think it's such an interesting thing that a lot of kids do here, and it could be connected with the curriculum, and that would be a really cool certificate.
It does kind of align with the curriculum. They do, they do, because the teachers cross over.
Yeah.
Right, I mean, Mr. Buckley isn't officially science, but you'd think he was.
Right.
Some people kind of get confused.
I love that program.
Yes.
All right, see, all right? On that note, press on stamp, I will again turn off.